Good evening, everyone. I am calling to order the Monday, July 17th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. G., will you please take the role?
Ms. Hockenberry is absent this evening. Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Rankin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Wodisca?
Here.
I have not yet heard from Mr. Jean.
I believe he will not be here.
Okay.
He could surprise me, make a grand entrance, but I don't think he's going to show. Tonight, we don't have, we're not hearing from any additional speakers. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, great. I have received, I believe, eight petitions as it relates to the railroad cottages. If you would like to speak to us on the proposal, you can fill out a speaker slip, which I believe is right outside the door. We'll be calling up, or I'll be calling up the names in the order that we receive them. But if anyone wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do it. Otherwise, I will get to the railroad cottages issue momentarily. All right. Seeing no other petitions, let's move on to old business. We do have a issue about 116 Great Falls Street. We are going to defer that item until August 7th, 2017, and it will continue to maintain, continue to be on the city council's agenda for August 14th. The next item is the railroad cottages.
Do we have to have a motion to do that?
Motion to defer it?
Two dates are...
I don't believe we do, since we have already established when we're going to do it, but I'm happy to have a motion if we have additional...
I think just for clarity, a motion would be helpful. It's an advertised public hearing date, getting a...
Fair enough.
...deferl to a date certain.
Okay. Can I get a motion to defer the 116 Great Falls Street comprehensive plan change and conditional rezoning to August 4th, or, I'm sorry, August 7th of this year?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we defer 116 Great Falls Street com-plan change and conditional rezoning. We defer to public hearing in action until August 7th, 2017.
I second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Great. We're official now. All right. The railroad cottages project. Are we going to get a presentation from Mrs. Aubrey? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Carly Aubrey with the planning staff. The proposed cottage housing development is for railroad cottages at the end of Railroad Avenue. Cottage housing developments are allowed in the R-1A zoning district after approval of a special exception by city council and subsequent site plan approval by the planning commission. The process for this project to date has been that the city council referred the resolution for the special exception out to boards and commissions on May 8th, and staff has reviewed the third submission, and I'll go into comments and feedback from the boards and commissions in a few minutes. The next steps would be a city council action hearing on August 14th, and then if the project is approved, it'd be site plan and subdivision to consolidate the three existing lots, and those would both come before you guys. The subject site is approximately one and a quarter acres in size and consists of three lots which would be consolidated. The existing site conditions consist of trees and grasses. There are no existing structures. The site is accessed by Railroad Avenue, which terminates at the subject site. To the south, east, and west are single-family houses. To the north is the Washington and Old Dominion Trail, Fairfax Water Offices, City of Falls Church Homeless Shelter, the city's property yard, and some private vehicle body shops. The site is located approximately one and a fifth, fifth of a mile from West Broad Street and two-thirds of a mile from the West Falls Church Metro Station. The conceptual development plan includes the proposed 10 cottages and one common house. All are approximately 1,500 square feet in size and 25 feet in height in one and a half stories. There is shared open space throughout the site. Oops. The common walkway, and then space over here, and space in front of the common house. There's 13 public clustered parking spaces on the western side. There's pervious pavers and wooden walkways throughout the site, landscape buffers around the perimeter, and improvements proposed for Railroad Avenue for emergency access purposes. The project has been evaluated for consistency with comprehensive plan. A detailed table is in the staff report, but some examples of how the project is consistent includes providing a diverse housing stock for all income levels and providing services and facilities for all ages and abilities. It promotes compatibility with existing neighborhoods and provides environmental preservation in relation to infill residential development. It promotes green building and low-impact development within the city, and it supports economic activity by increasing access to city businesses and by increasing access to regional activity centers. And I'll get into a little bit more, but this site is across the street, or across the trail, from the West Falls Church Revitalization District. Some of the staff comments that have been received in relation to stormwater, the applicant is proposing to manage stormwater quantity and quality through underground detention, permeable pavers, and bio-retention. The city will be able to fully evaluate the submitted calculations during site plan review, preliminary, that it looks like their proposed methods will be suitable. It will likely not improve the existing flooding problems, but also not make conditions worse, which is consistent with city and state code requirements. There was some exploration into improving the flooding in the neighborhood by acquiring some easements on adjacent properties. This was not achievable at this time, did not get commitment from all adjacent property owners, but it's something that the city will continue to achieve in the future. Landscaping, the cottage code requires 20% canopy coverage in 10 years, which is the same as single-family residential developments. And in addition, the code requires landscaping buffers, which are to be maintained in perpetuity within the site plan code requirements. If this comes to site plan, there will be some waivers requested for the landscaping requirements on the north side due to the required curb cuts. And then along here, will be evergreens instead of canopy trees, and that's because of sewer easements, sanitary and stormwater easements, and that's been reviewed and okayed by the city arborist. The conceptual development plan, there are some things which are included as conditions of approval that you'll see in the motion, but they're proposing a bike storage locker here, and then one of the storage pads for the trash and recycling is here. So one of the conditions is that it be moved out of this area to somewhere else, and then that these shrubs that are shown here be relocated. That would be reviewed further during site plan. The proposed fire marshal plan is shown here, and it's, I broke it up, so it's kind of zoomed in, since it's hard to get all of that clearly on one slide. The fire marshal is supportive of the plan with the proposed enhancements to Railroad Avenue, both for the proposed project and for the existing homes along Railroad Avenue. The current conditions of Railroad Avenue are substandard for fire safety purposes, so the fire marshal would like to see this, these improvements be installed to benefit this whole street. In addition, onsite systems are proposed, such as a fire hydrant is proposed here. Each unit would be individually sprinkled. There is non-combustible siding, and with the height limit limited to 25 feet, it's easier for ground ladder fire suppression. Nova Parks has submitted comments on this project. They are not able to grant permanent or long-term rights to the city or the developer for the improvements to Railroad Avenue. This is a standard requirement for Nova Parks for any non-park use, no matter what the, where the location, or the extent of the use. They're just not able to grant permanent uses. The city is working with Nova Parks and the developer on a license agreement, and this is ongoing, and we've reviewed as part of this process and the site plan review process. And we would want to look at further to what extent any proposed trail improvements would be anticipated by the parks, and if those would actually impact any of these improvements. Part of the agreement would include a noticing period to where if the parks was looking at improvements on the trail that would impact the fire access, the city would be provided with proper notice, and enough notice to come up with some alternatives. And either, in any situation, any of the onsite proposed fire protection methods would This is showing Railroad Avenue improvements, specifically the grasscrete area along Railroad Avenue. And again, this is broken up into a couple sections. The top part is starting from Fowler down to about halfway railroad, on Railroad Avenue, and then this bottom is picking up that and on down to the site. Nova Parks has provided comments on that, that any of this landscaping that is needing to be removed would be replaced, and then also any grading that would be required to install this would need to be looked at to make sure that it would not cause any hazards to trail users. And they do understand that this is typically something we see during site plan, the site plan review process. In the most recent submission, the applicant is requesting a waiver to a section of the code, which specifically Section 48 to 41B allows the city council to modify requirements of the cottage housing ordinance. And the applicant is requesting a waiver for the section of the code that discusses vehicle parking within buffers, and they are proposing six parallel parking spaces in this area as for potential overflow parking, and that is within the 20-foot setback and landscape buffer area. Staff is suggesting that since the project provides the required number of parking spaces per code, that this is not required. However, it's proposed as a condition of approval that this parking aisle be shown as a potential alternative and installed if after one year of full occupancy of the development, it is determined that this overflow parking is required. And this could be included as a condition in the project's transportation demand management program and assessed as part of the annual surveying that's required as part of the TDM. Regards to the TDM, again, there's one and a half, one and a quarter parking spaces per cottage unit that's required for cottage housing, and for this project, that's 13 spaces, and they are providing that. TDM goals proposed are to provide travel options, allowing residents to age and place, and demonstrate that number of parking spaces provided is consistent with city code and accommodates the travel demand. Part of the TDM strategies include providing an information kiosk and a carpool board, a transportation coordinator onsite, and then unbundled parking, parking tags, shared bikes, and a bike cage. Additionally, annual surveying would be included to assess the transportation usage of the site, and then a periodic check-in with the city for updates on options and information. The cottage housing ordinance has six special exception criteria that we evaluate the project against. The first one is to provide an age-restricted community. The applicant is providing, or proposing a 55-year and, or older community, and no permanent residence under the year, age of 18. Relevant language in this regard is included in the draft voluntary concessions and the draft condominium documents. Second criteria is that the site design encourages social interaction, minimizes impervious surfaces, and promotes low-impact development. The proposed project includes front porches on all units facing the central walkway and a common house with indoor and outdoor amenity space, and all proposed paving uses, uses pervious materials and wooden walkways. Low-impact development techniques proposed include pervious pavement, rain gardens, and capturing the first inch of rainfall from roofs and parking areas. The third criteria is shared amenities in connection to the community. Again, the project proposes a common house and a centralized walkway connecting the cottages and the common house, common open space throughout the site, and the site is adjacent to the W-NO-D trail, which provides connectivity to the shopping, recreation, and transit options on West Broad Street, which is located one-fifth of a mile from the site, and they are also proposing shared bikes. Third criteria, or fourth one, is including design and connectivity with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of design. The proposed project is proposing these, sorry, I'll spit it out, elevations, and these elements include similar materials and design as surrounding single-family houses, such as roofing materials of shingles and metal, front porches, and siding and building modulation. Project has less overall height and similar to, or less massing than most of the single-family dwellings in the surrounding area, and landscaping buffers would provide screening from adjacent residences. Several existing trees in the eastern corner of the property are indicated as trees to remain, and landscaping buffers and tree canopy would provide screening of the development from adjacent residences. The fifth criteria is that the project achieve lead or equivalent, lead silver or equivalent, they are providing earthcraft gold, and additionally, their voluntary concessions include elements such as geothermal heating and ventilation, air conditioning units, two-by-six exterior walls with R-21 installation, energy cell appliances, at least one electric vehicle charging station, and solar panels installed on the carport roof. The final criteria is that it's located entirely within 500 feet of revitalization area, and this shows its proximity to the West Falls Church Revitalization Area. The applicant has provided a preliminary plat, possible plat for four lots on this It does appear that frontage, lot frontage, basic setbacks, and coverage would be met with this proposed lot layout. The staff report includes this table that compares, this four-lot comparison, to the current proposal of the railroad cottages, and they are comparable in terms of building and impervious surface coverage, and the cottages that provide less floor area height ratio and height with the cottages. There's more landscaping and perpetuity provided with cottages, and there are comparable residents with some assumptions, assume two to five individuals per single-family dwelling house, whereas cottages, you could assume one to two individuals. Overall, the boards and commissions supported the project. There were two main topics that were brought up most consistently, and that was to ensure management of overflow parking. Two groups did support the concept of an overflow parking aisle, and the other thought was that the project would be better with fewer cottages and more parking and green space. Additional comments that were raised by at least two groups included that there is considerable distance between some of the cottages and the trash storage and carport areas. They wanted to make sure there's enforceability of the age restrictions, that effective stormwater management is provided. There's requests for archaeological review. Some would like to see greater monetary contribution for affordable housing program, and then there was support for proposed improvements to the W-NO-D Plaza area. Some of the community benefits provided in the voluntary concessions included the improvements to Railroad Avenue, providing earthcraft gold for the units, or the site contribution of $10,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, improvements to the W-NO-D rest, trail rest area, and an historic commemoration on the site. The staff is recommending that the planning commission provide a recommendation of approval to the city council with the listed conditions. The one is the proposed overflow parking aisle shown along the northern property line to be shown as an alternative, and during site plan review, that greater details regarding the use of the common open space, such as specific amenities, shall be provided. The bike locker shall be relocated out of the front yard setback, and shrubs in the trash recycling pad shall be relocated. Note one from the fire marshal and off-site Railroad Avenue improvement plan shall be restated on the landscape plan, and during site plan review, product data sheets and installation details of the proposed reinforced grass shall be submitted for city and Nova Parks review and approval. I can take any questions from the planning commission?
Thank you for the report. Yeah, I think what I want to do here is, let's take some questions from the planning commissioners, if we have any clarifications that we would need, and then at that point, I'll then open it up to the public to hear their comments, and then if we have additional questions, I may call you back here to answer those that we have from the, relating from, related to what the public has told us. So, does anyone have any questions you'd like to ask or clarifications?
Yeah, I had a question. Specifically, in your memorandum and your report, you indicate that staff, as far as the overflow parking goes, staff prefers to have it as a condition, to not provide it, but have it as a condition that if it's needed in the future, it might be provided and, or it would be determined later, and I guess the question is, you know, who would determine that? How would they determine that? Because there's not a lot of specificity there, and I didn't see anything in the proposed, you know, conditions onto council that really was explained, what's the threshold? How would you decide if it was needed, and who, who makes that call? City council, planning commission, staff?
That's something we would include and review as part of the transportation demand management plan. There's an annual survey component in that where they would look at, evaluate how the transportation is working, if the parking's sufficient, and so at that time, staff working with the applicant can move forward with installing, implementing the overflow parking. And that's if city council approves that modification.
Ultimately, staff would, would make the call if it was...
All right. Mr. Stevens?
Is there any way in which the applicant's proposal is not in compliance with the city's cottage housing ordinance?
Anyway, it's not in compliance?
Or alternatively, is it completely in compliance?
So it is in compliance, assuming that these waivers are, if the waivers are approved, then it would be in compliance? Yeah. But there is that provision that they can request waivers, modifications to, to the code.
Two general questions, and they get specific. So, I think the ordinance for this site allows 13,600 square, 606 square feet of building coverage. They've asked for more, and I know the ordinance gives some allowance for ways to get more, and in this case, it's the greater, equal to or greater than 596 square feet of solar panels on the parking garage thing. But what is the logic behind earning more lot coverage than is permitted? Is it an environmental thing?
So, when looking at ordinances, a lot of them would allow greater coverage than what our current, both what our current R-1A zoning allows, and then what we wanted to see in the cottage housing ordinance. Some commissions, I believe that Environmental Sustainability Council, wanted to see some environmental components into, into the ordinance, and so that is a reason why we built in an incentive to doing some of these green development type items, is if they wanted, and keeping it all within that 35% impervious coverage. We didn't want to extend beyond that.
So you couldn't do edge to edge and just put a solar panel on top of everything and get that?
No, there's only, it's only a 5% increase that you could do.
All right. And then, I had heard before that the solar, like, I understand solar, I don't know that much about solar, but I know in Virginia, it's challenging, you can't necessarily plug into the grid and everything, so are these solar panels going to actually do anything that's all that great for the environment, or is this sort of like a tax to get a little more lot coverage? Like, what are the solar panels going to do?
They'll be able to provide, I believe, powering for onsite lighting, and then some for the common house.
So there'd be a battery?
I don't know.
Because you're not going to use solar panels to turn on lights when it's dark outside, right? Unless there's a battery.
I don't know exactly how solar panels work too, but I do know that it would help with powering the common house and then some of the onsite lighting.
And, I mean, Bob might know the answer, but, so I guess I'm just, I just want to make sure that we're not like, oh, great, we got these solar panels. They literally don't do anything, because they power the lights after it gets dark, but it's dark, so there's no power. You know what I mean? So I don't, how do we make sure? You're looking like you don't understand what I'm saying. When the sun goes down, well, solar panels don't create electricity, and that's when you need lights, because it's dark outside.
I think I understand the question to be about the specifics of how are the solar panels benefiting the site and the community in terms of energy use.
Right.
The specifics of that may be a question that are better handled by the developer?
I might be able to help a little bit. The solar panel system that they have will most likely, most likely be what's called net metered. That means it's plugged into the grid.
It can be plugged into the grid.
That's right. So it'll produce, from what I've seen, about 20,000 kilowatt-hours per year, so that's displacing fossil fuel.
All right. If it can go into the grid, that's great. I just, early on, I had heard that maybe it couldn't, in which case, it's much less useful. All right.
It could be not connected to the grid if they choose to put in a battery backup system, in which case they would be using all of the electrons that they produce on premise, but I kind of doubt if they'll do that.
And then, and this is, this getting extra coverage through something like this is specifically this ordinance, is this not something that's offered in other programs in the city? Is that right? Specific to the cottage ordinance? This is a new concept?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. And then, for the age restriction, has anyone, has the city attorney or anyone evaluated that? Like, I'm not an attorney, people have, I've heard different people questioning whether or not that this is going to work. How, you know, five years from now, how, and it's, if there's a bunch of teenagers living there going to school and all that other stuff, who will we look back and say, hmm, somebody got it wrong?
The city attorney is reviewing the draft, the voluntary concessions and the condominium documents. With it being in the voluntary concessions, that does give the city the ability to enforce, and then with it being in the condominium docs and them having to report to Fair Housing Act, HUD, that's another level of enforcement.
All right. That's all I got. Ms. Teetz?
Just because we brought up the waivers, I just wanted to make sure, as I understand it, the only waivers are, would be for this possible parking in the future, which would be in the buffer that's between the project and Railroad Avenue itself, correct?
Right.
Right. So it's buffering those streets, which is a little bit different than buffering another property. And then the other waivers are all, deal with landscaping, correct?
Yes.
And there's no other waivers?
Yes.
Okay.
I just have a couple of quick questions. I was reviewing some of the comments by the advisory, Architectural Advisory Board, and it was talking about some security provisions and some walkway issue, the walkway being a problematic for the seniors. Has that been addressed in this particular proposal? And I guess as a more general question, is this, is what we're seeing here this evening in any way different than what we have seen in the recent work sessions? Because I didn't see anything different, other than these, like, recommendations that have come forward.
The main difference from what you saw in the last work session is the overflow parking strip.
Yeah, right.
In terms of the walkway, it's going to be, it would be a gradual... In terms of the walkway, it's going to be, it would be a gradual change in elevation, so it won't be full 18 inches during the entire way of the walkway. The security, I think I'll have to...
How wide, I'm sorry, how wide is the walkway?
Six feet.
It's six feet wide and 18 inches high? Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm under a hurry.
I was going to just defer to the applicant on the security, how they're going to manage the common house and keys and that kind of a question.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to hear. The security concern seemed like a real one. And was there any, I mean, I'm almost going right down their list here, was there any adjustment based on the trash can location? I know that's, I've actually heard that comment on more than one occasion. This application changed that or did not change that?
It's in the same location, basically. There's a couple of different pads, one for trash, one for recycling, but it's at that western side of the property.
Yep, no, I know it, okay. So, I'm curious to understand, well, I'd like to hear from the applicant on those questions, and then also just to hear what the thinking was on the overflow parking. Seems like a very good idea to me, but what the impetus for that was, and what your thinking is on its likelihood that it would be implemented, since it sounds like we're going to wait a year, is the proposal? Is that we're going to evaluate after a year and then put it in?
Good evening, my name's Jack Wilburn. I'm the architect and one of the partners for the project. So, we'll sort of take it in reverse of what you just did. The parking impetus was purely a reaction to neighborhood concerns, that even though it met the ordinance, that we should have some mechanism. There is no parking along the edge of Railroad all the way down. It isn't like a normal street where you would have off-street parking or on-street parking. So, from our perspective, we think this is a response to that concern, and so, we're happy to put it in. We would prefer to put it in upfront. It's cleaner, simpler, it'll be done at the same time as the other work that's being done on the other side of Railroad Avenue as it stands right now. That was purely, there was concern, we thought this could meet it. It's a mechanism within the ordinance to ask for a waiver to allow it. It doesn't really affect, as Ms. Teet said, it doesn't really affect adjoining neighbors other than positively.
Let me just ask, and referring to Mr. Krasner's question, you're going to be reporting to determine whether this is in fact necessary or not? It sounded like the determination's going to be made by staff, but what kind of information are you going to be providing staff? Are you doing counting of cars, or, I mean, how's the mechanism?
This right now is the first I've seen of this piece, so we're still looking at that. Again, our preference would be to install it.
I'm assuming we're going to hear from the public on this issue, but have you received negative feedback on this?
About putting it in front?
Putting it in?
Well, it's kind of contradictory feedback. In one respect, it's people asking, you know, what can we do to ameliorate parking overflow, and at the same time, saying it's not allowed by ordinance, even though the waiver is. So, we've just gotten what I consider some contradictory feedback on that.
Okay, no, I'm sure we'll get clarification in just moments. Okay, go ahead.
Walkway?
Yeah.
The walkway is six foot wide, the minimum for, if it was subject to ADA compliance, would only be five feet, so we've given it an extra foot. It is no more than 18 inches at any given point. It actually slopes up, ground moves up and down. It allows us, because of the fairly flat topography, to not have any dead spots. We don't have to pipe water around the site as much. We get to sheet flow it where it's supposed to go. So, it allows us to be relatively neutral, which is one of the intents of low-impact development strategies generally. This kind of walkway is not uncommon. You go down to Roosevelt Island, and they have big sections of this. So, this is not new technology in any way, shape, or form.
No, I don't think it's new, but are you concerned as one of the applicants about the safety of it being tripping, or someone 55 and over falling 18 inches off the walkway?
It's essentially a straight run, which is one of the benefits. It's usually turn motion, so one of the things that we were proposing is actually having the, each individual front porch would then have an extension of a handrail out to the walkway, so that when somebody is making that turn, they've got a grab point. But when you're going straight, it's not usually an issue, and six feet's pretty wide.
All right.
But it meets all code requirements, or it actually exceeds any known code requirement.
Okay.
I'm not quite sure what to make of the security. I believe that comment was mostly about what we were doing in terms of lighting. So, what we are constrained by, of course, is to be dark sky compliant and to have very cut-off lighting. So, we have very minimal pole lighting that we've used to establish sort of lighting up at the entrance to the parking area, and at the sort of core area of the fire comes in, so we have two pole lights. But other than that, we're doing all low bollard lighting all along the walkway.
It definitely was referring, the concern was referring to the lighting, for sure.
Yeah, so, it is one of those things where we feel that we have more than adequate lighting. We also have, everybody has porch lights that, in this kind of environment, provide a lot of light. We also are constrained, I believe, by our covenants that we can't have any lights shining off into the neighbors. So, all lighting, because it's a condo, we can control all the exterior lighting. So, any security lighting that we put in, or if people who live there want to add it to their house, it all has to be compliant and sharp cutoff and not shine into the neighbors. But I think that we have more than adequate lighting.
And I guess my last question is really, of the overwhelming comment that I have received in this documentation and talking with people in the community is regarding density. I would just be interested, and I have seen that the density has not changed over time, and I'm interested in hearing your thoughts, or others of the applicants, about the density on the site.
One of the things that's kind of deceiving, and I do have some added images, but fundamentally, what's deceiving is that people are looking at numerical, like, nine, sorry, 10 is more than four. But the footprints for these houses are significantly smaller than what is being built in the city now as new development. It's also a function of the heights. A bigger footprint that's taller registers as a much bigger volume than 1,000-square-foot footprints that are 1,200. So, that's very clearly in line with the intent of the code. We're meeting it in every way that we can think of doing so. We've gone so far as with the architecture is manipulating the roof lines so that they're hipped and not gabled, so you don't get the sort of big shapes on most of the project, especially the ones facing the neighbors on Ellison. And from our perspective, density or intensity is measured by multiple things. It's volume, it's coverage, it's number of people that are going to be moving in and out of the project all the time. So, we provided side-by-side comparison on all of those elements, very much matching the same density, intensity statements that were put into the ordinance and the evaluations that staff did for you all and for the city several months ago. So, we tried to find the same exact verbiage, the same exact math, to show that we were below significantly. One of the most compelling was just volume, where we're a third or less of the volume of what you would normally assume using four lots and using the same sort of size house that is being currently built as new construction on similar lots.
Okay, thank you.
One thing about solar, Falls Church is very active with the Solarize Virginia thing, so I'm hoping that our solar is actually going to do something.
All right, thank you. Any other questions before we turn it over to the public? All right.
Just one more question, we get off the path issue, so to speak. Earlier versions or proposals talked about a golf cart or some other way for folks, especially folks who live, who might live at the far end of that boardwalk. What's the, and I know that, I saw that that's gone now, that aspect, what's envisioned for those folks?
What I have lived with, actually, we have, in my community where I live, we have parking out at the perimeter of the community, and we have a couple of 82-year-olds who walk that distance every day to put their trash or to get to their car. What we do provide for everybody is a farm cart. So, you've got something really to roll with, you can pull your groceries, you're not carrying them the whole way. That's what I envision, is that people would have a shared golf cart, not a golf cart, a shared farm cart, which is a pull behind, it's a wheelbarrow with four wheels, if you will. But a golf cart was deemed as unnecessary. When we got down into it and did the math, 300 and some odd feet to the furthest distance is very similar to what someone might do if they were in a condo and they had to walk down the hallway, go through, walk across the lobby, and get out to their parking. 300 feet sounds like a huge number, but when you pace it out, it's virtually nothing.
All right. I am now going to open it up to the public. As a reminder, for those who walked in later, if you want to speak on this issue, there are speaker slips outside in the hallway, and please fill those out and give it to Ms. G. Currently, I have, on this topic, nine speaker slips, looks like 10 momentarily. Per our guidelines, we ask that when you come up here, you state your name and your address, and you limit your comments to three minutes. Ms. G. is going to call out when there is time. We have, as I said, 10 people, that could be a half hour, or I'm expecting a half hour. So, if someone has said what you want to say, I respectfully ask that you attach yourself to their comments instead of repeating it, but that is your choice, however you'd like to handle it. They're coming in more and more, so great. And I'm calling them in the order they were received. All right, number one is Carol, I want to get this wrong, Shu, shoe? Shoe? Shoe, okay.
You've heard my name, my address is 7201 Sewell Avenue, which is four houses in from the intersection of Sewell with Fowler. So, this is my neighborhood we're talking about. I object to the plan as it is currently in process. It is ill-conceived, ill-planned, and not suitable for the site. Dense. If you want to build four houses there and keep the zoning the same, I would be fine with that. I have no objection to senior housing, I have no objection to many of the things that are planned, but it's too dense. You're going to have 20 cars with 10 residences, and those 20 cars are going to come park in my front yard. Rather not have them there. I would prefer that you provide adequate parking on the site, and that people who move there not be restricted in the amount of parking that they need. I personally don't believe that there's a market for these cottages. Seniors don't want to climb stairs. They don't want to have a second floor. I bought my house because it doesn't have a second floor, and I don't have to climb stairs. I bought my previous house for the same reason. So, I would strongly urge the commission not to recommend that this be approved or go forward as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brookshire, Greg Brookshire.
Good evening, my name's Greg Brookshire. I'm the homeowner at 7203 Sewell Avenue. I appreciate development. I'm in the condominium management business, so I always like development, and condominiums is great too for business. This project, though, the two main concerns raised about density and parking, I don't think they've been addressed. A lot of the issues that you've heard, you've heard working on the license, stormwater management, working on it, their waivers, it seems scattered right now. Seems like a lot of work is going in to trying to get this to fit, and I think we're seeing it doesn't fit. densities by current code, we can all live with. I do applaud looking at expanding housing options. I've managed 55 and above senior communities for a lot of my career. You're missing in the parking, the housing aids, the number of medical transports that are going to come in and out. It's a lot more activity. The homeowners are going to have people visiting on a daily basis, for sometimes 24-hour periods, 12-hour periods, you're just going to have it happen. So, you're going to have to look at the parking issue and where everybody's going to go. So, I hope when you're looking at this, you see that maybe some more time needs to be spent on it, at least a motion to table this, to get the working on it items addressed, if not just flat-out denying it and allowing the development by right. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jane Rasmussen. I live at 711 Timber Lane, and I've lived here since 1995. I am for the Railroad Cottage Project. I think it's fabulous. I have been following it since its inception, and I think it's a fabulous idea, and I'll give you some basis for why I've come to this conclusion. Actually, I'll give you a couple adjectives. Lonely, isolated, worried, overwhelmed. Those are the adjectives that describe my mother, who is 78 years old, living in Arlington. My father died five years ago, and she has been looking all this time for someplace other than her home where she can't age in place because it's empty, humongous, deteriorating, and expensive. But her only options that she has found so far are condos, or retirement homes, none of which suit her at all. She would like to have the sense of a home, but can't manage the upkeep of it. And this is exactly what she and others are looking for, and I'm sure there's quite a huge demand for this, as there's nothing else like this. I also want to give you some other adjectives. Innovative, forward-thinking, noteworthy, one-of-a-kind, much-needed, eco-friendly, neighborly. These are the adjectives that we can share with a larger community, with the rest of Virginia, show them that Falls Church is at the forefront of this concept, and is a special community that is thinking of all of its residents and all types of communities that it wants to have, and looking for innovative ways to be eco-friendly and meet the needs of people who are over age 55, who do not need to be in a retirement home. I also think the concern about people needing 24-hour care, I don't think that the people who will be living in this, in each cottage, is going to be a 95-year-old disabled person. Obviously, it's open to them, but realistically, I don't think that's who's going to choose to stay there if they're that debilitated. I want you to realize that you're creating a community within a community, and that's what these individuals are looking for. Because you go to a condo, it is very isolating. My mom has been very depressed, my father died in a terrible accident, and she's very lonely and can't find something where she will meet people, except for in senior living home, senior residence, where most of the people are 80 and above. And she's just not that old. I mean, she's recovered amazingly from a terrible accident and is sprightly and fun and outgoing, but doesn't have that community where she can find others to meet and share her exuberance with. So, for now, she's stuck where she is, and it's, and she's just not finding the options that would make her happy. A couple things, I think I want you, I would like to look into the Fire Marshal issue for the existing homes. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you being respectful of the time. No, he's same last name.
Yeah, my name is Kurt Rasmussen, I live at 711 Timber Lane in Falls Church. And I've lived here for 21 years and have been involved in one way or another in some of the development over the years. I was part of the Industrial Development Authority in the late 90s, where we were able to kick-start the development for the Spectrum and the Broadway. And during that time, I saw a lot of the negative attitudes around development, and I'm worried that for a really innovative and interesting project like this, that we're getting some of the same "not in my backyard" mentality like we got on almost every development that occurs in this city. And so, I am very much in favor of this, of this development, not only because it's And so I am very much in favor of this, of this development, not only because it's innovative, but because it is an instant community, and it's something that will allow seniors to have a place to go, possibly after they've lived in Falls Church for twenty years like myself, and be able to stay in Falls Church, and also to build a community within that area. And so I'm afraid that, just like a lot of the other projects in the past, some good projects that have been voted down, that this is going to fall to the wayside because of concerns simply by a small minority that lives in general proximity to the development site. So I'm, I'm here to voice my citizen support for this community, because I think it would be a great addition to Falls Church and to that general area. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Harrison.
Good evening, my name is Julie Harrison, and I live at 1220 Ellison Street, directly behind the railroad cottages. So I guess we are talking about my backyard. My neighbors and I, we have a petition with over two hundred signatures against this project. We continue to have very serious concerns that have been completely ignored by the developer. This is the wrong location for a project like this due to the limitations of the site. I'm going to talk about four things: fire safety, density, parking, and lack of green space. Fire safety: the Northern Virginia Parks Authority refuses to issue a permanent easement on their land for the widening of the road or the fire truck turnaround area. This should be a deal-breaker right there. Density: R1A residential zoning is the lowest-density lots in the city. As the Village Preservation Society points out, this proposal of twelve buildings, ten houses, one common house plus the parking structure, does not fit in with the character or feel of the rest of the neighborhood. The proposal has minimum setbacks, maximum square footage, and is too dense for this awkwardly-shaped site of only 1.25 acres. Much of the site is unusable due to the triangle shape. The units will be spaced just six feet apart, giving almost no visual separation. Parking: according to the ordinance, all parking generated by the site must be hosted on the site. Only thirteen spots are being offered, when we predict approximately twenty to twenty-five cars daily. Why set up a project from the very beginning, set up to fail with not enough parking? Moreover, the developer's solution to install parallel parking along the perimeter front edge of the property is in direct violation of the ordinance, because that consumes green space that is intended to provide a visual buffer for the WNOD trail users. And Northern Virginia Park Authority is requiring that the handicap drop-off location parking spots be removed, as is their legal right as landowners. That means there is no handicap parking available. Every single staff report that you've received, and comments from the boards and commissions, echoes the sentiment that parking is inadequate. This dovetails in with traffic. If people go to look for a parking spot, there's not one, this will increase traffic going to look for another spot. Lack of green space: all the bungalow courts, as they are referred to on the West Coast, have a primary tenant of green space. This railroad project has virtually no common usable green space. The developer is counting the walkway and the parking area, as well as the inaccessible part of the triangle, as part of the green space. The units could be designed at one end of the complex with the parking in the middle, and more green space. The developer and the architect act as if this is the only design plan that will work, when in fact, let's face it, this is the design that nets the most profit. Also, I'm going to talk briefly about the common house, and that is a safety issue for us, because there's a bedroom there, it's going to basically act like a hotel. We would like that. The proposal to turn that into a gym, we think that would be a much better use of the space. If it's a gym, then that's not causing increased traffic for people to go to their gym, and that provides something people could use daily. Let me just finish up, I'm just about done. If you're considering approving this project for the sole reason to not add more children to the city schools, keep in mind that three or four houses would just be a drop in the bucket compared to two-hundred-and-eighty-nine units being proposed for the project at Apple Peace. Please vote no on this project. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Christine Hopkins, I live at 4149 Sixth Street, which is in Arlington, but I work in Falls Church. I do a lot of work in the aging-in-place movement, and so this project seems really interesting. We talk a lot about aging in place, which sounds lovely, excuse me, but we've found that you bump up against things like safety and mobility, inability to do maintenance, the loneliness, and the health problems that can come with that. So we're actually morphing into more of an aging and community concept, where people are in physical structures within their known community, but they are not in a big house that they can't take care of, and the problems that come with that. Excuse me. And so I just think it's a great idea. The one thing, because it is age-restricted, I was wondering if they would be giving preference to Falls Church residents, so that they could then be maybe prompted to sell those houses that they're currently in, and that opens up for new residents to come into Falls Church, which is usually, you know, stimulating for a city to have new residents coming in. And then, not about that, but about the parking, to me, it seems excessive. It's not a, it's not an assisted-living facility, it seems like it's more an active, younger old community, and so I would think the parking should reflect more of a transit-oriented development. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Dorsey.
Hello, my name is Joseph Dorsey, I live at 1002 Railroad Avenue, I'm immediately adjacent to this particular parcel, which, I think it's acres, the functional size is about one acre. You're talking about twelve structures on an acre of land. One of those structures concerns me in particular, and that's the community house. It's a living structure. I would ask the planning commission to take a look at, what do we mean by a community house? It's going to have a kitchen, bedroom, a bathroom, a place to live. Sounds like a residence. What makes this any difference, or different from any other resident on there, and what makes it any different from a, a structure that can be rented? For two weeks, for a month? I understand there might be some limitations on a couple of weeks, but what about a month or two, if you want to stay in Falls Church? What's going to keep that happening, keep that from happening? I would ask the planning commission to kind of consider, what is that community house? Is it, it's got a bedroom, a shower there. I can stay there with my family for any number of weeks. That community could rent it to me. What prevents that community from renting it to me? And how is the C of Falls Church going to enforce that? My comments, thank you.
Thank you. You have very nice handwriting.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Dorsey, I reside at 1002 Railroad Avenue, directly adjacent to the proposed development site. Thank you for the opportunity to once again address the commission. You've heard tonight from several people, my neighbors, citizens, taxpayers, who are all impacted by this project. We have repeatedly spoken about our concerns in person, in meetings, in writing, and here in public in these meetings, about the increased traffic on a one-lane dead-end road that's twelve feet wide, about the density of ten houses, this community house, a carport. These houses are six feet apart. The public safety issues to concern, the fire issues, and also the pedestrians and bikers accessing the WNOD trail from Fowler Avenue. I'd like to focus specifically on the parking. In these boards and commission meetings that I've attended since May, I've repeatedly expressed my concerns about the location of the carport and the exhausting air pollution from the car exhaust. This represents a nuisance from thirteen cars, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Jeez, I must need three hands in order to count these cars that will be ten feet away from my windows. Think about your own house and your windows. What would your reaction be to having this nuisance of air pollution from car exhaust? In several meetings with the developer, we have asked them to relocate the carport to a different location on the site, in essence, to reconfigure their design. However, this has resulted in nothing. They claim they won't make as much money, so they won't negotiate or compromise. That makes it clear to the neighbors what this project is really all about. It's not about a concern for having an aging community here in Falls Church, it's about maximizing their profit. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Edwin Henderson.
Hello, I live at 307 South Maple Avenue. I, I've had an interest in this property for a long time as a member of the Historical Commission, and also founder and executive director of the Tinnerhill Heritage Foundation. Ms. Whitney was my friend, and she's the one that the property was purchased from. She had a number of issues with the city regarding this property, particularly going back to the time when the addition on the house was leaning and bad repair, and they made her tear down the whole house. This property here, as all of the property on Railroad Avenue, was a thriving African-American community known as Gravel Bank, going back to when eighteen sixty-four, when Lucinda Gaskins purchased the property from either Mr. Sewell or Mr. Fowler, because it was next to the railroad tracks. And the African-American homes provided a buffer, sound-wise and otherwise, from the sounds of the railroad. Ms. Whitney's grandfather, William Rector, had a thriving business on this property. He owned a barber shop, shoe shop, shoe shine stand, and convenience store, which had a frontage road on the railroad from Leesburg Pike, which led to that property. Being that this property is in such a uncommon shape, the triangle, I believe that the design that Bob Young and, and the architects have done is a good project, I think. I've seen bad and overcrowded cottage housing before, my son Santa Barbara lives right next to one. And I think that the ten houses, the way they've laid it out is a good design, I'm sure that there'll be tweaks and accommodations to the people that live on the street, and I trust that the Planning Commission will lead this project in a way that will bring it to a conclusion that's happy for all concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm sorry? Khan, okay. You've got to help me out with the lettering here, I mean, give me a little help.
I am left-handed, it's kind of challenging. So I am Rob Carr, I'm not Rob Khan, sorry. Someone just liked that somewhere. I live just off the map at 1019 Parker, right across from one of those white houses there. I came and spoke at the city council meeting, I don't know, four, six weeks ago, something like that, and one of the things I saw on that was this attachment five, that actually was on the screen a little while ago. I thought, oh, that's interesting, how they may or may not compare what else could be built there. And I went and looked at this thing offline, you know, over the next few days, and I was kind of frustrated, because when I looked at it, I thought, boy, this thing is biased based on things like Lot Four having, my goodness, about five thousand square foot of permeable patio spread across that entire lot, three outbuildings on it, Lots Two and Three have garages at the very rear of the property. This thing was built to create an impression that what they're doing with twelve houses would be the same exact impact as Four. That's just not the case. This is not what someone would build, I don't think, in a regular design. I think that you would build something that was more cost-effective, just like you're trying to do here, if you were building four houses. I thought that was kind of interesting, I called that your guys' attention before you made your decision tonight. And I heard a couple things tonight that made me scratch my head, too. If they're going to put four parking spaces in, but we're going to do it next year, who's going to pay for it? Developer will be done, sold the property, and be gone, so the developer's not going to pay for it. I don't know who would. And then I heard about these carts, farm carts, I guess I envisioned something that's like in, you know, go to Maryfield Garden Center. Where do you park those when they're not being used? Kind of an interesting question. And then I do know that one of the properties, it's, that house is actually for sale now. Mike and Deb decided to move out to Maryfield because they didn't want to deal with this in their backyard, so there's negative consequences from this proposed development already happening in our neighborhood. Thanks for listening.
Candice DiMatteis.
All right, one in a row.
Hi, I'm at 2509 Fowler Street. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to share some of our ongoing concerns. One thing I would just say is, I would argue that voting against a proposal might would allow for some of these unresolved issues to come to the fore. This is the first project, as you know, so you're setting a precedent that will have impact on all, any potential future project, as well as this one. So getting it right makes a lot of sense, and taking your time to do that. There are several unresolved issues, as you've talked, as you've heard, I'm going to focus on parking and density. One thing I would mention that my neighbor just raised about the four housing, the fourth driveway of that proposal, too, I believe requires you to drive over parkland to get to it. So I would just add that to the potential unresolved concerns about that. On parking, as I understand it, every other condo development in the city that has two bedrooms has two parking spaces. Per census data in this area, we average 1.4 vehicles per household, making the current parking proposal at thirteen spaces inadequate, and that doesn't include guest parking at all. As you've noted, almost everybody who's taken a look at this, from neighbors to the city and advisory bodies, have said that there's an issue with the adequacy of parking. The developer has proposed an overflow parking area, as you've heard, as I understand it, their Nova Parks is opposed, and I'm not quite sure how that's going to be resolved, if it has been resolved. Candidly, even more troubling to me is city staff's recommendation to do nothing except kick the can down the road, wait a year after full occupancy, after the developer has gone and they're offering to take care of some of the problem now, to see if overflow parking is needed. You've asked questions about how that's going to be resolved, apparently city staff's going to do it. How are the neighbors going to be involved in that decision-making? It just makes no sense. We know it's a problem now, let's take care of it now. Density: the project is also much too crowded. We've discussed the fact that the homes are very close together, six feet apart at the bumpouts, and, but they're actually, it's closer than that if you consider some of the decks on the drawings as well, it's not just the little bumpout areas. Most of those decks are within six feet, and sometimes less, of the neighboring building. So if you look at the developer's plan, it's page forty-one or forty-two of the attachment one that you have, and keep in mind that the walkway itself is six feet, so you can do that just by eye in comparison. Looking at Unit One, its deck is about three feet away from Unit Two. Unit Two's deck is less than three feet away from the common house. The front porches on Units Four through Ten are about five feet from the central walkway. So that means the green space of the front yard in front of each unit is narrower than the walkway itself. Unit Three is the one on So when you take a critical look at the proposal and just see exactly how crowded it is, I believe you'll agree that it's really not right-sized for the property. And much of that stems directly from trying to maximize the size of the units and the number of units, without regard to what that means for the neighborhood, the future residents of the cottages, or future of cottage housing in the city. For those reasons, I urge you to vote against the staff's recommendation to push the parking issue down the road, and to table the proposal as it stands until we can work out these unresolved issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Roy Shannon.
Good evening. I represent, my name is Roy Shannon. My place of business is 201 North Union Street, Alexandria, Virginia. I represent Stephanie and Joe Dorsey at 102 Railroad Avenue. We'd like to talk with the Planning Commission real quick here about the disordinance, in particular, 48-241, Sections A14A and A14B. And what's interesting here is, along the property line with my clients, there's supposed to be a landscape buffer. If you look at A14A, it says, "No drive aisles, roads, vehicle parking, or buildings shall be located within the required landscape buffer." Now, buffer right there is shown on the drawings as 10 feet. But if you look at the next section, again, this is A14B, it says, "Where the cottage housing development site is adjacent to a residential zoning district, side yard setbacks for dwelling units or community buildings shall be increased from 10 to 15 feet to provide sufficient space for the landscaping buffer." So the question is, if the landscaping buffer's supposed to be 15 feet, which it is on the rear properties, but on my client's properties, it's only 10, and there's supposed to be no parking in there. So what would have to happen is, the parking would have to be moved five feet. I understand that the staff has indicated that the carport is allowed to be there, but the parking isn't. If you look at, again, this is 40-241, A14A, the last sentence. And I think that's important, because if you also look at A15A, it discusses that detached garages are not permitted, except when provided in a common area other than the required perimeter landscaping buffer. So there should be a 15-foot buffer completely around this property where there's no parking. And yet, on my clients', there is parking there. So perhaps they move the driveway over in the parking lot five feet, and they might lose two houses, but that's okay. That's good planning. It doesn't bring the profit margin in, but it is good planning. Again, this seems like a project that is a, you know, you have an ordinance that was just recently passed, and the Planning Commission passed it with an intent. And the intent isn't being met here when you have these numerous waivers or requests for modifications of it. It should fit perfectly, since this was just passed. This is the epitome of a square peg in a round hole. But moving along, one of the things that's quite concerning is regarding the fire marshal requirements of the 18 feet. The requirement's 20. It's moved down to 18, because they're gonna have sprinklers in the units. But that 6 feet is on parkland. The question is, if that parkland wasn't there today, and the Park Services took it back, would the Planning Commission approve this? Would the Fire Marshal say it satisfies the intent? With it being 18 feet, it satisfies the intent today. But if tomorrow it's taken away, which the Park Service has made clear as day that it has the ability to take this property back for its improvements, and the city can't hold it against it, would it go ahead and approve this project? Would the city do that? Would the Planning Commission? This is a perfect time to get the first one through on this cottage ordinance right. This is a project that should be tabled and have these issues fleshed out and discussed. I think you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You. You're gonna correct me, right?
Yep, that's good. Andrea Mucinski.
Oh, excellent.
My husband and I bought 1,000 Railroad Avenue, so just on the other side of Joe and Stephanie. We're tearing it down and building a new house, and we've made our second submission to the city, waiting to hear back, to get our permits. We live right now on Shreve Road, and we have a four-year-old and a three-year-old, and we were really interested in this place, because it was so quiet, and our kids wouldn't get hit by a car. So my main concern, I guess it's related to density, and I think it's a really cool project, honestly, and being green is great. The width of railroad really has me concerned, and with our dealings, trying to get our permits, we, our surveyor surfaced that it appears that we still own the land to the far side of Railroad Avenue. And granted, we don't have our permits yet, so I don't know what Falls Church is gonna, how it's gonna be resolved here, but the surveying company surfaced documents that show that we still own, that our corner points are the far side of Railroad Avenue, which means that there isn't actually any railroad avenue there, aside from the trail. And, like, we also are, we're pushing back our house to a 40-foot setback, instead of a 30-foot setback, to allow to make a proper railroad avenue there, if, you know, Joe and Stephanie and the neighbors to the other side, Victor and Tracy, would agree to it, and maybe the one on the corner, too, I guess they would also have to. So definitely open to that idea. I think, before we have all of those people crammed in there, which I'm not opposed to in principle, I would really like to have a proper legal street where two cars can pass each other. And I know that there's, like, green pavers or something, but I hope you'll forgive my ageism. My mom is 76 years old, and she's still driving. Passing older drivers on a road that's not painted as having two passable lanes makes me really nervous, and having my kids playing in the front yard makes me nervous. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I live on 998 Railroad Avenue. I think you've heard of, from most of the neighbors. One of the key topics, density and parking. I wanted to highlight the importance of density, right? There are at least over 15 children that live on this road, right? I grew up in South Florida, huge senior citizen community. Again, no disrespect to seniors, they are not known for their driving abilities, okay? I have witnessed several hit-and-runs of, you know, I've worked at a grocery store, right? A lot of people don't know when they hit somebody, okay? We do not have a wide enough road, right? But the amount of children that live on this area, and you're trying to install a senior citizen community, that is a huge safety risk, okay? A lot of the things, the citizens that are concerned about density, they have not been properly addressed, right? I think the citizens, we are asking for proper research, right? There are several data out there of successful cottage communities, out there from the Housing, Department of Housing of Urban Development, right? There has been no comparison of disordinance against other successful communities, which is what I'm really asking for, right? I can give you several different examples of successful communities. Lehigh Valley, Puget Sound, Kirkland, Washington, East Greenwich Village in Rhode Island, all right? At a minimum, we need to compare the density. It cannot be subjective. It needs to be objective. Compare the density and the parking situations of those proposed cottage ordinances, okay? And then, if, all, I think what the public wants is due diligence and research to prove that this is the right decision, and decrease the risk factor of the children living on the street. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm coming to my last one. If you'd like to fill out a speaker slip, now's the time. But otherwise, David Jacobs, you have the last word.
I'm David Jacobs. I live at 1,006 Fowler Street, and I work at Falls Church Animal Hospital. I walk down Fowler Street, past Railroad Avenue, every day to go to work. There are no sidewalks, once you get past Ellison Street. Having this increased traffic coming up and down Railroad Avenue, making that left-hand turn down on the Fowler Street, the pedestrians are in the road. I think that's a serious safety hazard. I know that's Fairfax County, at that part of Fowler Road, but I think that should be taken into consideration. I think the idea of the project is good. I don't understand why there has to be so many housing units. Reduce the housing units, that would decrease the traffic, decrease the parking issue. Two, as was mentioned, they are taking over some parkland to make the road wide enough to handle this traffic. If you're gonna invest $700,000, I hear, for one of those houses down the road, somebody's gonna take away your access if the park decides to take back your road, why would you buy there? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Gee, have you received any other speaker slips?
I have none.
Okay, all right. Having received none, then I'm gonna close this public portion, and I'm going to turn it over to the commission to solicit comments or ask additional questions based on what you've heard. Anybody have any comments, questions? Go for it. Nope? No?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just a couple of things that I heard come up in the conversation. Taking a step back and thinking not just about this project, but also the larger policy goals that this project and this cottage housing ordinance are trying to fit into. The city recently updated, as you know, its Vision Chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, and one of the key tenants of that is providing for social inclusivity. And that means that there are housing and service options available for a range of incomes, a range of ages, a ranges of abilities. And a cottage housing ordinance is one tool in the toolbox that help, can help address that issue of aging in place and providing communities for people as they get older. I think, as you see with any development proposal, there are questions about density, landscaping, setbacks, and the cottage housing ordinance that the city has on the books speaks to exactly those things. There are requirements for all of those. There was a question about research and best practices. I know that as this ordinance was developed, best practices from other communities were explicitly researched and explicitly compared to the city's proposed ordinance. More than eight other communities were explored, as well as phone calls to planners on staff to understand what works and what doesn't. And those ideas were folded into the city's ordinance. And so I think, really, the question is less about, is aging in place a good thing, or is cottage housing appropriate for the city? There's already been an affirmative statement that cottage housing is something, an idea that the city wants to explore. So I think it's more about, are the expectations, how does this fit into the community, have potential negative impacts been addressed? How will this remain flexible if issues arise as this is implemented?
Sure. This is Paul Stoddard, and he is one of our planners. I don't know if you have a more official, are you a senior planner?
Recently, I was moved up to deputy planning director, along with Gary Fuller. So I'm serving for Jim Snyder tonight, who is the planning director. Tonight, he is down with the city council in a work session.
And Mr. Stoddard frequently sits in this role. Congratulations on your promotion.
Thank you.
I guess I had a question about that setback issue that was raised. 10 feet or 15?
Yeah, the waiver for, on that landscape. Okay. So the code requires landscape buffers of 20 feet from, in-depth, adjacent to public streets, and then not less than 10 feet in-depth from common landscape buffers from abutting properties. For dwellings and community buildings, the setbacks are 20 feet from a public right-of-way, 10 feet from a side property line, and 20 feet from a rear property line. When there's adjacency to a residential zoning district, side yard setbacks for dwelling units or community buildings shall be increased from 10 to 15. Community buildings are community guesthouses and clubhouses. The carport is not considered a community building.
What about the part about no parking within that setback? That's the part that he raised? Not that, he didn't seem concerned about the actual parking structure, it was the physical existence of a car within 10, within 15 feet of that.
So, no drive aisles, parking or buildings shall be located within required landscape buffers. So the landscape buffers are 10 feet. The building setbacks increases the 15 when you're adjacent to residential.
Because it's a parking structure, not a building, it doesn't have to have the 15.
Correct.
And also, one thing I wanted, so we have the, we have the carport, then we have the 10-foot buffer to the property line, correct? And then I would assume the structure next door would have to be at least 10, 15 feet away, because they would have to have their own setback.
Yeah, I believe their setback is about 10 feet.
Okay, so it's 20 feet between the carport and that building. Okay. And also, just, I wanted to go back to the waivers real quick, because we were talking about this. Far as I know, the waivers for landscaping aren't in the size of the landscape buffer, it is actually in the number and style of trees.
It's in the, the number and type of trees.
Right, and it's trying to fit in more evergreens, maybe, unless...
Right, because I guess canopy trees, you don't want those over sewer or storm, storm drains.
Well, I also heard that there was a desire for more evergreens to have a faster barrier, green barrier. Okay.
Well, hold on one second. Andy, are you finished with your questions, or you want to come back to you?
Yeah, I just wanted that one covered. I don't know that I have other questions, but we can move on.
You get another chance, don't worry.
Why?
Ms. Tietzke, why don't you finish up with your question?
Okay. I just thought you guys should talk to the community house, because it didn't seem to be a good understanding of what it's for. My understanding, it was a place where you could have a party, and you could have an overnight guest there, if you didn't have, but I think you should talk to what the purpose of that is a little bit more, because it seemed like it wasn't very clear. I mean, I don't think you guys are seeing, envision it as an Airbnb kind of place, so... Yeah.
I do, before he does, I do want to say, the code has language about the community buildings, that for stays of 14 days or less, and our kitchen facilities to facilitate social functions of the association owners. A community building that is available to all residents shall not be counted as a dwelling unit, and no guests staying there shall be a city resident by virtue of staying there. So we have built that kind of buffer into the code.
And so the current community building fits those requirements. But I just, I just thought what you, what your vision for it is, because I don't think it seems to be clear.
Well, it's, I can speak to this issue. I've lived with a common house for 17 years in my community, and it's been a tremendous asset for building community. It's a place where we have common meals a couple times a week. That's its primary goal, is for the people who live there have a third place. It used to be, it would be church, or a bar, or, you know, the civetan, or something like that, but this is providing its own built-in community structure, if you will, designed primarily to promote that community. People getting together, having a coffee klatch, you know, playing card games, sort of neutral territory for all the people who live there. We've added the idea of having a guest bedroom, because we only have two-bedroom homes, and from our feedback from everyone who's been looking at it, they, they don't know that they need the other bedroom, but they take great solace that if they had an overflow, they would have someplace else. Or, in fact, if they had the screaming child who was colicky, they could stay over there, you know, rather than in-house and disturb. So its primary purpose is designed to promote community with the people who live there. We're happy to do whatever it takes to say that this is not ever gonna be an Airbnb, that it's never gonna be kind of long-term rental, that there's, that's completely precluded, whatever the town council or city, a city council wants to put on, we're fine with.
And I just have one more clarification. I think staff would do this. So as my understanding on the history of this property, originally, it wasn't developable along that street, because Railroad Avenue wasn't a street. It wasn't even a paper street, technically. And am I correct, is it still primarily owned by parks, the Nova Parks, and that the entire reason there can be any houses along there is because we have an easement?
Yeah, it sounds like the question is about the specifics of who owns Railroad Avenue and who has access to it and our development rights available.
Because there seems to be this feeling that we could lose the easement at any time, but that would be for all of the structures upon it.
Sure, and there's certainly been a lot of conversation on staff about this. I'll turn it over to the developer.
The, the history on this is roughly 12 years ago now, and I won't go into the long story. The short part of it is, the city requested that the Park Authority grant a 12-foot easement on the theory that that road had been in use since 1864, and therefore, there was a prescribed easement. The Park Authority is not...
Yeah, it sounds like the question is about the specifics of who owns Railroad Avenue and who has access to it and our development rights available.
Because there seems to be this feeling that we could lose the easement at any time, but that would be for all of the structures upon it.
Sure, and there's certainly been a lot of conversation on staff about this. I'll turn it over to the developer.
The, the history on this is roughly 12 years ago now, and I won't go into the long story. The short part of it is the city requested that the park authority grant a 12-foot easement on the theory that that road had been in use since 1864, and therefore there was a prescribed easement. The park authority is not permitted by law to grant that kind of an easement, except in this case, they made the decision, their board actually made the decision, that if the city took them to court, they would lose. They therefore granted, that allowed them, in their words, to get around the federal requirements that would have taken years. They granted the easement. The city owns the road. It is on a permanent easement, the 12 feet. The park authority cannot by law, according to them, grant an additional six-foot easement. But they are willing to have the grasscrete six feet be installed. The issue of, since they can't legally say, "We'll never take it back," that's what they said. We, we can take it back if we want. The reality is, there is a very recent plan for the, for the trail, to in fact, put in a double trail through part of the city of Falls Church. That plan, recently adopted by the park authority, ends at Route 7. That is on the other side from us of the bridge. It's pretty clear to me at least that one of the reasons for that is they don't want to widen the bridge. That would be very expensive. Therefore, the probability that anytime in our lifetimes, or probably a lot longer, that they would in fact, want to take that back are really approached zero. Let me add one more thing while I have the podium. We reached a final agreement with the city this morning, with the Director of Public Works, to contribute $50,000 to the city so that the entire of Railroad Avenue up to the Fairfax County line can be not only repaved, but since it's built on mud, and the fire marshal's concerned that a fire engine might not make it, the city will, with its ability to contract with contractors, build a new road that has a new concrete base, it's a new process, with those funds. And that will be completely under city control. So we'd like to make the argument that by widening the road by six feet effectively, by completely repaving the road, the safety and the convenience of not only our project, but all of our neighbors will be greatly enhanced.
Krasner?
My question was about the community house, and so that was, Ms. Teet stole my thunder on that one. I wanted to make it clear that I knew our ordinance had provisions for that, and I don't want to rehash it, but I mean, yeah, so that was my only question.
Stevens? No. Anybody want to make any comments? Heard what we need to hear.
I mean, I, my main comment is, we went, we spent a fair amount of time putting together this ordinance. And it sounds like this project, yeah, I hear that noise too, I don't know. I'll ignore it. You know, this project definitely is pushing the ordinance to the limits, but it sounds like it fits within that. Now, there seems, there is obviously a lot of neighborhood concerns, that's not uncommon. And I think some of them are probably pretty good concerns. I, I do feel like if, if we decide this project doesn't work, I feel like we need to revisit the ordinance. Because, like parking, for example, the ordinance is very clear about the parking, and now, you know, there seems to be by some people concern. So if we're going to say, hey, the parking's not good enough, and I think we'd have to go back and tweak that ordinance, otherwise it doesn't seem logical to me. And in terms of parking, I also think unlike a mixed-use project or a commercial project, I mean, people are going to be buying these units knowing what the parking situation is. And while I'm sure there's plenty of 55 and older people have two and three and four cars, I suspect those people won't be interested in a property like this. And to someone's point before about part of the goal of this type of development is to encourage, I think, less car use and more alternate modes of transportation. And I think in some ways, one of the ways you do that is making it a little, a little bit harder to have two or three cars. So I think I'm not too concerned that that, that each person's going to have two cars, knowing that they can only park one on the site. So I think overall, if we want these kinds of developments, this one fits in the ordinance, and I think ultimately probably will add a lot to the neighborhood, even though I know some of, some of the neighbors are skeptical of that. So I just think if, if we aren't in favor of this, we really need to reconsider the ordinance in certain areas. But I think overall, it's probably a pretty good project.
Yeah, I'm looking for general comments at this point.
Okay. I will say that when I first looked at this project, I was a little uncomfortable with it because of the density. But then I looked at the code we put together, and basically, we had someone come to us for a railroad cottage project before. And they had a piece of property also, actually weirdly, along the WNOD further down. And we could not find a way to make a cottage project work within the code we have in the city. It just wouldn't fit, they would have taken way too many variants, special exceptions, our code just didn't allow for it. So we said, if we want to do this, we're going to have to have code for it. So that project went away and instead of houses were put on that land. So I think we went to the trouble of putting this code together, we vetted it, we looked at, you know, it's funny, we keep having people talk about projects in Washington State and California, and those are the kind of projects we looked at. We, we looked at these different projects when we put this code together. And we did get a lot of comment from the community. And there were a lot of changes made in the code as we went along. So I kind of feel like with Andy, like we, you know, this project does work within the code that we put in place. We had, we did exactly what we said, we said we can't fit the prior cottage project, we need code for it, so now we have an ordinance. So I think it's hard for us to turn around and say, well, this fits our ordinance, but we still don't, you know, we're still not sure about this. But the other side of it to me is the more I looked at this project and looked at it against typical development we get in the city on these kind of lots, so the four houses or three houses, or whatever houses would be on there. I, I don't know, most of the new houses that have been in my neighborhood have all been 4,000 to 5,000 square foot houses with as much patio and driveway that they can fit in there under code. So that, that's pretty much what I've been seeing. And, but just looking at the cottage, I think that it's a much more environmentally friendly kind of project. I think that the buffers are much more neighbor-friendly because typically with a new R1A lot, they, you know, they usually don't have any kind of buffer between the properties. They usually clear-cut the property, so you don't have any kind of, any kind of transition between your two properties. I think that the stormwater will be dealt with. These are things that are built into the code, that it will be, have better landscaping, that the stormwater will be dealt with. In a single-family home that go up, again, in my neighborhood, they, sometimes the water's dealt with and sometimes it isn't, and it's very difficult to deal with it after the fact. It's usually considered to be a civil matter at that point, and the city can't really help you if there's, if that new house is built up and flooding your yard. So I guess, I mean, I'm just looking at that, and I look at these cottages, and I think what they give you is kind of a townhouse condo kind of community feel. I know people in townhouse communities that have a lot of gatherings, but it also lets you still have that single-family home feel. So I, and I do think that there are a lot of people at that 55 to 75, like 20-year age range where they're, they're looking for something like this because they don't want to move into a condo building, and they're obviously not ready to move into a retirement village. So I just think there's a lot of value to it.
Krasner?
I'm going to take a slightly different approach to this than my colleagues that have spoken so far. I mean, I, I still have some major concerns about the project. I mean, yeah, our job is to, the reason it's a special exception, you know, is, and it's not by right, means that it's not simply a matter, in my opinion, of checking off boxes that they've met the criteria. I mean, I think, yes, there's the, the basic criteria, basic minimums and maximums. I mean, there's an underlying part of the ordinance that for special exceptions in 48-90 that says, all special exceptions should result in development that promotes the health, safety, and welfare of persons living and working in the area. That's, that's, that's 4890C. And I still think that it's, I like the concept. I'll start off in saying I like the concept. I think that cottage housing is, would be a great addition to the city, and I think it could work on this site. But I don't think it could work on this site at this density. I think it's too dense for an irregularly shaped lot like this. I don't think it's providing enough usable open space. I think the substandard access has been dealt with as best as could be dealt with, but it's still substandard. And the more units you put at the end of a substandard street, it only exacerbates a condition that will never be an optimal condition as far as access goes. You know, the overflow parking, I think, is imperative, and I think that that issue is still kind of up in the air as far as whether or not it'd be provided or not. I think the parking is a minimum, and, and I think in a lot of other parts of the city perhaps, there might be a lot where you'd have some on-street public parking options that you don't have here on the occasion that you need some overflow. And so the six spots, I mean, I think if this goes forward, I think the six spots is absolutely imperative that that's provided here. Or four, whatever the number is, the four or six, that there's, the parallel spaces. You know, no sidewalks being provided, you know, there are no sidewalks on a railroad, there never will be. You know, that's also not optimal. None of this could predict the future. I mean, the Nova Parks issue is significant. I agree that, you know, it's probably not changing, you know, they're probably not changing the alignment of the trail anytime soon. I mean, you know, I know there's been talk about this license agreement, and I think, I, I hope by the time city council would act, the license agreement would be fully vetted and worked out as far as what that means and what's entailed with that. I agree with the ARB. The ARB, you know, we're talking about design, and we want to have an optimal design of this property. The ARB raised the same flags that, that I had raised myself. And so, you know, for those reasons, I still, it was up to me, I think at this density, it's too much. And I think a lower density, and I'm not going to sit here and give a number, but I, I think that the parking could be pulled away from those neighbors. You could have more separation between the buildings, you could have some better open space, you could have a better design on what is a very constrained, odd lot. Not that the lot couldn't, again, not that this concept couldn't work here, but I just think when you max out the density on this lot, I, I think it doesn't, it just doesn't work for me. So I, I'm not ready to support, support it the way it's proposed. I haven't seen, I've seen very little change overall in this layout since it was first presented. And so at this point, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Stevens?
Yeah, I'll try to keep my comments fairly short. I read through all the documents over the weekend, so I spent quite a bit of time just trying to be as familiar as I can with the many details that have been raised. At one level, it, I believe that the city council had in mind a particular objective when it passed the ordinance, to diversify the housing stock in the city. This application meets the requirements of the ordinance, and so from that narrow perspective, I think it would be difficult to, to say no. I am concerned about what would go in to the property by right, four houses, large houses. I, I agree, every house that's been constructed in the city these days is a 4,000 to 5,000 square foot house with multiple bedrooms, and that creates a lot of problems. And so this offers a kind of a, a very interesting alternative to that, to that outcome. And then finally, I don't dismiss the environmental benefits at all. In fact, I think they're to be applauded. R50 insulation in the ceiling. I've been trying for years to get the state to adopt an R50 code for the statewide building code for residential construction, and it won't do it. And here we have an excellent example of how you can build a much higher performing house. The geothermal, all of those aspects, I think, should this project go ahead and be completed, will be held up and applauded by many people outside of Falls Church as being something very noteworthy. So for all those reasons, I come out, I'll be voting yes for this.
All right, thank you. Before I just say what I want to say, let me ask everyone other than Mr. Krasner how they feel about this overflow parking. I'm of the belief that it should also be included in the, the original application, but I'm curious what, what people's thoughts are. Should we wait the year or, or otherwise?
Yeah, I was a little bit, it sounds like the developer wants to do it. It sounds like the neighbors don't want the project, but if they're going to have the project, they're worried about parking, seems like they would like it. And the drawback is what, it reduces the street-side buffer, like landscape buffer. So like if, if the parking weren't there, there'd be some bushes or something.
That's a 20-foot buffer, correct?
You're asking about the requirements for the front yard setback?
Yeah, so that, so if we put parking in there, would we lose like half of that buffer?
Yeah, it's 20-foot landscape buffer required, so it'd reduce it by half.
There would still be some buffer, but not as much. So it'd be half parking, half buffer at that point.
And since you're standing, you, when you guys suggest putting that off by a year, is that because you value the 10 extra feet of buffer? Or you just think it's silly to put in because you don't think the parking's needed? Like what is the?
Uh, both. I mean, I think having that 20-foot landscape buffer is good to provide screening to the adjacent properties, namely the WNOD trail. And the other is to determine if parking is, is really needed. You know, part of the reasons the ordinance has the distance requirement from a revitalization area is to keep it open to, or close to transit options, to give people a reason to get out of their car, not need their car. And it's right on the WNOD trail, I mean, that's...
And, yeah, and do you know, to the question of who would pay for it a year later? I mean, I know at times we have required money to be put in escrow or something, like what, what is the answer to that question?
We'd probably do something like that, a bond or escrow.
Bond of some sort. So there would be money if a year later it was determined to be needed? I mean, this is one of the ones that's sort of like, I don't, I don't know.
I will put out that the idea of contingency parking has been used in other developments in the area. I know there was a senior facility in Arlington that was able to cut their expected parking demand almost in half. That they had a field area adjacent to their building, and they set it aside on the site plan as, as to be developed as parking if needed. I think that idea that people self-select into a community that works for them and their transportation choices is accurate. Parking is sort of one of those things that if you build it, they will park. So what kinds of residents do you want to attract? Do you want to attract folks who are looking to be a one-car household and use transportation options? Or do you want it to be a two-car household that's, that's driving it out of the street? So certainly you can hold these parking spaces open as an option. You could also probably look at the way the landscaping is handled to, to achieve some of the effects of that 20-foot buffer in a smaller space.
Yeah, I mean, I was looking at it, in some ways, the off-site parking is so inconvenient that I just thought like someone's not going to buy and want to live here if they anticipate having a bunch of cars on a regular basis. They just, it would be, I understand what inconvenience some neighbors, but it's going to have to, they won't be able to park on railroad, right? They'd have to go quite a far distance away. So I, I can see that logic, that by not bothering with that parking, you further encourage the kinds of people with the kinds of transportation needs that you want in this location. I just, you know, I, I could go either way. I think it's tricky if the developer wants to do it and the neighborhood sort of wants to do it to say, don't do it. But I definitely see the point that by doing it, you're sort of encouraging something that you don't want to encourage.
Do you want to like change the timing, it's one year out, maybe make it, look at it six months out or?
The challenge is that you won't know until the, until all the units are sold, which maybe could happen pretty quick, but you know.
I think the other problem too is if we, if it's delayed, then they're going to have to landscape it. So we're actually going to tear landscaping up, which seems kind of not very great. The curve and hard surface then. I don't know, I think if, like if it is delayed, we almost should let them, well, that's a whole nother issue, like not put trees in at that point, but...
Any other pins in on that or no? Do you have a feeling about parking?
I'm ambivalent. I see both sides of the argument, so...
Okay, all right. I mean, it's going to come up in the motion, I just want to know if, I'm ambivalent as well. I mean, I initially, that, that argument seems to make sense to me and what Mr. Rankin said, that let the people self-select if they need the parking then to add it. But I can see both sides of this one as well. It's not, it's not as definitive as I originally thought, though I was swayed by the developer saying they wanted to put it in and, and hearing that from some of the people in the community. Let me just say my own general thoughts. I'm going to be supporting this project. I have been involved with it as, as the rest of the commissioners have for quite a while now. We were involved with crafting this city ordinance. This group and myself particularly were interested in having cottage housing as an alternative to residents in the city. I think that this location is a challenge, but under those circumstances, the developer has put together a proposal that is, that makes sense and is considered of many, if not all, of the objectives. not all of the objectives. I have certainly heard from the community the concerns about the density. I think it's a fair concern. We have heard them consistently over the months. This has been a well-organized and vocal community against this project. And it gives me pause to vote for a project when there is so much negative sentiment in the immediate area around the project. But overall, when I look at it from the community standpoint, from the greater Falls Church housing options, I am convinced that this will be a positive addition to Falls Church in general. So for those reasons, and having worked on the project over these months, I'm going to be supporting it. And I, as I said, attach myself to many of the comments made by the other commissioners. So I am somewhat ambivalent about this additional parking and am looking for guidance from whoever wants to make this motion about whether you think it should be included in a one-year delay or whether or not you think it should be included immediately. As everybody sort of commented, we've heard both sides of this argument. But the current motion as proposed by staff does include the parking to be delayed, the additional overflow parking to be delayed by six spaces.
I think the staff made a good argument that if we add that parking, then we're starting to add people that weren't really the multimodal people we're looking for. But I will say this, like in this, this bullet point for this, where it talks about it is determined that overflow parking is required, I did think we should add by staff to the end of that sentence. So that's like fourth line down, parking is required by staff, by city staff, because that was one of the questions we had, who determined it? And I thought we should actually put that in that motion if we're going to use it.
The question that I have is, I mean, can we even, I mean, can we delegate that to staff? I mean, there's limits on what the council and the PC can delegate to staff. I mean, is it, maybe Adam answers the question for the city attorney. Just so, if this is going to go and we're going to put the parking off, I think it needs to be made clear that A, the developer's going to pay for it if it's determined, if it's determined, and B, to double check that various alternatives like this on the design can be put, delegated to staff without the need for an amendment in the future.
I think a couple of ways this could be handled, because I think the concern about overflow parking is very real. And I think one of the things that could be done is when the site plan is brought forward, there could be both an approved as well as an alternative if the parking is needed. So it would be approved by the planning commission as part of your action. I think also as part of your action at site plan, you could include the objective standards by which the need for parking would be considered. So in a sense, you're not asking staff to make that judgment call, rather you're asking staff to carry out the decisions of the planning commission.
Any other comments about the motion?
Mr. Chair, before you call for the motion, I had two late emails arrive today, and I believe they're at the dais, but I'd like to read them into the record if you don't have them. One is from Greg, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name. It's R-U-Y-A-X, excuse me, K, who lives at 103 North Cherry Street. As a Falls Church city resident for over 15 years and as a commercial real estate experience, I cannot think of a better use of the landing question. I believe it would be a matter of city pride to offer such a unique, worthy housing opportunity. The second email comes from the city's Arts and Humanities Council, and they transmitted the following information. The Arts and Humanities Council supports the plan with the provisions that the historical remembrance of the African-American community formerly located there be a requirement in the proffers and to be designed in time for site plan approval. And two, the renovation of the exterior of the existing shed owned by the Nova Parks to include a railroad theme in the architecture to be included in the required proffers. The Arts and Humanities Council supports the lush landscaping, including evergreen trees of a significant caliper around the exterior of the property, including the trail side to provide the perception of privacy for the neighbors, the cottage owners, and the trail users.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, because we had a copy up here, that we could add this to the motion, the historical remembrance of the African-American community. I'm not concerned about adding a second one, having the exterior of the existing shed owned by Nova Parks to be redesigned to look like a railroad theme. I think that's kind of outside the purview, but I think it would be great to have historical remembrance of that family there, since it's a long history. If everyone's okay with that added to the motion.
Adam, there is a voluntary concession regarding a historical commemoration. I don't know if you want to take a look at that to cover that, yeah. And then any improvements to the rest area for the trail would need to be, of course, approved by Nova Parks, so it's.
Right, so I wasn't thinking we should take that on right now, and that sounded like a project for someone else. I guess I didn't, oh, I do see it. It's, okay, I see it on the page three. There will be a metal plaque. Okay, so we don't need it then. So on the, so I guess going back to the overflow parking, what is the feeling right now? I'm willing to do the motion, we have to determine this. Should we not use the by staff then, since that seems kind of up in the air? But should we have something that's specific about that this would be, cost would be covered by the developer?
Certainly that part of it. You're reluctant to have the staff make this determination?
Well, Brett brought up an issue that he wasn't sure we could put that in there, but.
It's not about a reluctance on staff's part, but I think if there's a desire for certainty from the community, I think that's a way to assess that. And I think the recommendation, at this point, you're making a recommendation on the resolution. You'll still see this at site plan. It's a common mechanism that we've used to specify here at the time of resolution that certain conditions have to be added to the site plan. So you could update the resolution language here to say something like, instead of saying it is determined that overflow parking is required, you could say that and during the site plan process, objective standards are identified for identifying whether overflow parking is required.
Yeah, I think that's a positive addition, objective standards, whether it's by staff or by other means to determine if it's necessary.
I think you could also add to that statement then, where you're showing a potential alternative. I think you'd want to add some sort of statement, and we could certainly handle this at the time of the site plan, is that you'd have an approved option and then an approved alternative if that objective standard is triggered.
We don't need to spell that out, because we just say we're going to determine the objective standards. We'll determine that. Okay. Do we feel like we need to add language in there that this would be funded by the developer?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know, we should say you should have to escrow it or put it, you know, we should make sure that that's part of the.
Put in the bike locker that's being relocated. Before we move on, I'm looking at this motion more carefully. It says the bike locker, this is the recommendation from staff, that the bike locker shall be relocated out of the front yard setback, and the shrubs in the trash recycling pad area shall be relocated. Is there a plan to do that? Or do you have an idea if this resolution were to pass, how that would be addressed? I understand is the bike locker is right behind the community house facing the W and O D trail? Or did I get that wrong?
Correct. This is again, this is kind of new to me, hearing this requirement.
I mean, it's not a requirement, it's a recommendation by staff in the resolution.
Our concern is two-fold. One, it's a bike locker, so it's 42 inches tall. It's pretty much going to be buried in the landscape. And our thought is that you should put a bike locker next to the common house towards the W and O D. So this is the first we'd heard of relocation. One, I don't think it's, we've struck using a taller structure as a shelter and went to the bike lockers, which was one of the original options. And from my perspective, those disappear into the ground. I'm not sure where we would put it. We'd probably just flip it around onto their side of the fire. I mean, we can do it, it just didn't seem logical to us at first blush. And what was the other? Oh, yes, there's, there's a couple of bushes that are shown overlapped with one of the trash recycling enclosures. They just need to be relocated so they're not underneath it.
So what materials the bike locker made out of?
Pardon?
What materials the bike locker made out of?
Those are metal-faced. It's basically a plywood box with metal surfacing, similar to what you see at the metro stops.
Yeah, I'm familiar with one of the metro stops, but you believe that's going to blend in with the landscaping? That's not my sense of what I see at the metro stops.
Well, they make them beige and gray.
And green.
We think we'd make it green.
Or whatever.
But, I mean, we're not adverse to it, it's just it's first we've heard of it, and so we're thinking about what other options there would be. But we put it there because we thought it was logical for ease of access to the community members to take their bike out onto the trail.
All right, well, let me ask this now of staff. Why do we think, that sounds logical to me. I appreciate, is it the, you were just, the insertion of it in the motion because of aesthetics? What was the rationale behind inserting this in the motion or proposing it?
Well, there is a tree shown in the same location as the bike locker. So it was, something's got to move.
Well, I mean, that's, what I'm hearing is that so it blends into the landscape.
And I think there's probably, I mean, looking at the dimensions on it, it looks substantial there, maybe it's not. But I think it's just one more thing that shouldn't be in the landscaping buffer, so.
Well, we'll see this at site plan. So I'm not sure it has to be included in this resolution or, well, you make the motion how you see fit. It does look substantial in that drawing, and the ones on the metro are quite noticeable, but it's a good location for it.
It does show the trees are overlapping with it, so.
Okay, but we'll have to deal with it perhaps at site plan. But if you want to include it in the motion, that's your prerogative.
Well, we can include it in the motion, and that way we know during site plan we'll have to talk about it.
Okay.
Because I can see a few other places for it. But it does make sense to have it close to the bike trail, and I get that part.
Do we think there is some, this is a question for staff. Do we think there's a question about the type of grass pave that is permitted in the, by Nova Parks?
My understanding is there's various types of grass pave, and there's certain types that are better for handling fire access, and there are certain types that are better for blending in and looking like grass. And so they requested that also in their comments, and I know that's something the city would like to see too, so.
So depending on what the resolution is, perhaps that's something to address at site plan, the materials and the product data sheets associated with the grass pave, so that it meets these requirements of Nova Parks. Okay, those are my questions about the motion, but.
Leave the grass paved stuff alone. Okay. So we want to try this?
Go for it.
Okay, so Ms. G, the only thing we're changing is items in bullet point one. The rest of it, we're leaving as is, okay? So I move to provide a recommendation of approval with the listed conditions for TR-17-15 to the City Council, scheduled for public hearing and final action on August 14, 2017. The conditions include the proposed overflow parking aisle shown along 128 feet of the northern property line should be shown as a potential alternative and installed if after one full year of, one year of full occupancy of the development. And during the site, okay, it is determined that overflow parking is required and during the site plan, objective standards will be determined to decide if the overflow is This condition shall be included in the project's transportation demand management plan and assessed as part of the annual survey. The spots would be funded by the developer with means determined during the site plan. Bullet point two, during the site plan's review, greater details, illustrations, et cetera, regarding the use of common open space such as specific amenities shall be provided. During site plan review, the bike locker shall be relocated out of the front yard setback, and the shrubs in the trash recycling pad area shall be relocated. Note number one from the Fire Marshal and Off-Site Railroad Avenue Improvement Plan shall be restated on the landscape plan. And during the site plan review, product data sheets and installation details of the proposed reinforced grass shall be submitted for city and Nova Parks review and approval.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All right, what I want to, before we vote on this, I do want to address that bike locker bullet point as we're dealing with it. I don't like the word "shall" be relocated based on what I just heard. I would like to say the location of the bike locker shall be reevaluated. Because I'm not sure, it doesn't make sense there. That's my, I want to make sure it's not a, an issue for where it is with the trees, but that shall be relocated based on the fact, I think it makes sense there. To me, too strong for even this resolution.
You said the location of the bike locker shall be?
Considered. Reconsidered?
Reconsidered. There you go. Get rid of the rest of that and then.
Yes.
So during site plan review, the location of bike locker shall be reconsidered, and the shrubs in the trash recycling pad shall be relocated.
That would be my friendly amendment.
Okay, I accept that amendment.
All right.
You have a discussion on the motion?
Yeah, let's have a discussion on the motion.
We have a second.
For the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Do we, no, do we have, will you?
We need a second for the motion and the amendment.
I can't second it.
I second the friendly amendment.
Yes, we can have a discussion on the motion.
I said most of my piece before, I'll say it again. I think the project could be better. I think that the process is supposed to be a give and take. I've seen not enough give on the side of the applicant on this one, and I think that we're leaving something on the table. I hope the City Council will drive a harder bargain and push for the community and try to find a middle ground that balances the needs of the future residents with the existing residents here.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. G, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Krasner?
No.
Mr. Rankin?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisco?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Thank you and appreciate your time.
Excuse me, Chair. I understand that my item has come up on the agenda downstairs, so I'm going to head downstairs now and leave you in the hands of my colleagues.
All right. Based on the attendance here in the chambers. Based on the attendance here in the chambers, I would like someone to make a motion to alter the agenda so that we switch the order of reviewing the 2017 CIP amendment to be the next item on the agenda. And then after that, we're going to make the, to make the City Hall Site Plan Amendment following that. Would someone please make that amendment?
I move that we change the order of business, place in the 2017 CIP amendment first, and I guess it's actually labeled technically C, and then the City Hall Site Plan Amendment would be D, if we make Fairfax Street E, like it should be.
I follow.
I second that.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nays, none. One abstention. Okay. Ms. Mester? Please lead us.
Thank you, Chair, and Planning Commission members for the opportunity to bring the CIP amendment TO 17-11 back before you for consideration and action, and for adjusting the agenda order this evening. As we do have Library Board of Trustees member Chuck DeLonge in the audience, who I believe does want to speak during the public comments. We also have the Superintendent Noonan and his Facility Security Manager, Sevi Padella, with us, and they will be here to answer questions on school program. I'm also joined this evening with Karen Bala, who is our Chief Financial Officer. And so this is the first time she's had the opportunity to come and meet the Planning Commission and speak to you on this item. She was out of town for our last work session. So what I'd like to do is just speak a little bit to what's in your packet, and then turn it over for a brief update on some key financials that have changed since we last presented this to you at work session, so that you can have the same information that council literally just received downstairs as well, if that's acceptable. So with that, you have before you a staff recommendation to approve a modified CIP that is based on your work session and direction that you provided me. What, the motion is on the front page with the four whereas's and then the now therefore, that's the modified. The modified is further described in lines 21 to 24, so you could see the specific projects. The Mary Riley Stiles Public Library expansion renovation would be delayed to 2022. Thomas Jefferson Elementary School expansion to 2025. The Larry Graves Turf Field and Parkland acquisition would be then delayed after 2025, when it could be financially affordable. So in the five-year CIP that's currently adopted, the library would stay in. The other three would be just outside of the current five-year CIP window. The staff report does provide your past motion when you adopted the recommendation in February with the direction to bring this back to you. The rest of the information is, as you saw it at work session, minus the financial information that I would like to ask our CFO to present to you. You have before you a excerpt of this presentation about six slides. So there are the key ones that Ms. Bala will speak to, and I thought it'd be helpful to have them in hard copy because you might want to go back between the full and modified CIP to see the tax and tax bill implications. But we will have it on the screen for the public. This information will be part of the presentation Town Hall meeting this Wednesday, which will be on the school project and the modified CIP and the referendum for a community input opportunity. And once we do the financial presentation, then either Karen or I will be glad to answer any questions and seek your action.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Pleasure meeting all of you in person and happy to be part of this, one of the largest projects that the city is anticipating to take on. You have gone through this presentation last week, so I will highlight the newer information and then go to the staff recommendation based on that. So this, this graph in front of you, as shown last time around, shows the full CIP debt service, has all the projects aligned upfront as per the timeline required by the projects. And here's the tax impact that was discussed last week based on the requirement of that debt service payment, which did not account for projected estimated tax yield from the economic development of the 10 acres of land that is in the project. So what we are bringing in front of you is that additional piece of information. The tax yield assumptions on the next slide show that the study done by the real estate consultant Alvarez Marcel shows that we should have the proceeds in fiscal year 2022. So we're assuming that four years out, we will have just the real estate taxes on those land, and then four year out, we have a phased in net fiscal impact, gross revenues minus gross expenditures, and a 25%, 50%, 75%, and then within eight years, going to 100% net fiscal impact of a little over $3 million for that 10 acres of land. This assumptions is based on the fiscal impact model that is done depending on the number of units, the way the 80/20 mixed-use development that would be. Additionally, looking at the mixed-use development matrix that came up with median of, median of 307,000 for the eight developments that have taken place so far. So it brings us in the same ballpark range of a little over $3 million for the 10-acre land to go with this suggested reliable number of a little over $3 million for the land sale, for the tax yield. So factoring that in, the chart, the graph of the tax impact to average parcel, the Y-axis are the dollar figures on the median homeowner parcel bill increments. It drops down from, and I'll toggle between the two slides. I'm not used to this. So it, it drops down from, if we go with the red line, which shows the land sale proceeds, it drops down from nine cents to six cents, and essentially from $600 impact to a median home on, home price of $700,000 to $400 impact for a full CIP. However, the area of risk is between the red line and the blue line, as understandably so. The land sale proceeds are heavily relied upon in this process, and the timing of it also, starting in fiscal year 2022, as well as the development activity thereafter in the following years and the reliance on the tax yield that follows. So there are a lot of risk factors. The market, we are in the ninth year of our recovery since the last economic downturn. Bearing all that, and to try to mitigate those risks, the staff recommends a modified CIP, which you have seen. Here's the chart of the modified CIP debt service, which assumes aligning the projects more so when the land sale proceeds are realized, so spreading out the debt service and the issuance of debt. So to issue the school debt in fiscal year 18 onwards in three tranches over three fiscal years. And the City Hall as well in this year, moving the library over by two or three years to fiscal year 22. And Thomas Jefferson to 2025. And portion of the other CIP projects that are in the five-year CIP plan now of up to $5 million to be delayed to somewhere after the five-year CIP that we have currently. And the impact of that modified CIP, accounting for the same assumptions on the tax yield, four years of just the land assessment, and then a ramp-up approach from 25 to 100% tax yield would bring us down from four cents to three cents. And in dollars, which is probably more appropriate, you're going from roughly $300 to, to $200 as an immediate impact to the median homeowner parcel of average $700,000. And then after about three years, a steady increase of somewhere around the ballpark of $200 increment with the modified CIP, assuming we get 40 million in land sales in fiscal year 2022. And of course, I would like to remind that the blue line on top is, like, assuming all risks just come up and that, you know, it's a fallout. So it could be anywhere from seven cents to 11 cents in that situation for the modified CIP plan. With that, I don't know if you want me to go through the rest of the presentation. Hasn't changed much. But if you have any questions, happy to take those.
I don't need you to go for the rest of the presentation. We saw it last, or two weeks ago. Can you just go through this chart one more time here? I guess I'm not following what.
So this is where it was?
No, I, yeah, I just, it was the one buy-down debt.
Oh, okay, the yellow line?
Yeah, I got the others.
So the buy-down debt is like on a mortgage if you're making a one-time payment?
Right.
So like a prepayment? There will be some extra one would pay for it, somewhere around 25 to 50 basis points. However, when the money becomes available from the land sales, we make a chunk of payments since we are issuing debt in three tranches. We would pay out the first maybe 10 million as soon as we get it, and then the next bond. So what it does is it shortens the life of the bond. And however, the, it, it's not a refi. You, one can choose to refi at that point and then go back into a level debt if we want to. But it would just reduce the life of the loan since we're making a one-time. So we issue a, a bond upfront saying that we would need a, say, a seven-year call period, that we want to issue a call within seven years, so a prepay, prepayment.
Okay, all right, I follow it now. So my other question, I just want to understand, because I, some of these numbers are new in this, that we've seen this evening.
Sure.
If we're planning on borrowing $120 million, and then at some point in the relatively near future, a couple of years, we are going to receive the proceeds from the land sale, so that brings it down, let's say, let's just say 40 million, that's the number you used. You're now down to what, what, eight, is it 80?
So that's, that's the yellow line where you're buying down debt. The red line is you're buying down the debt service, so you're not using that 40 million to reduce your total debt. What you're doing is you're securing it for your future debt service payments.
Okay, no. If you are then buying down the debt, using that 40 million, what are your projected annual debt payments at that point? So you've now reduced it by $40 million, so you're at $85 million. And you're financing that over 30 years presumably?
Well, the debt that you're, originally, when you acquire the debt, you are financing it over 30 years. But if you make a lump sum, the life of the term, I mean, the life of the bond lessens.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to do, I'm not doing a good job of the math on the fly.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine.
But you're, but you're right.
There is a lot of detail in this, yeah.
The concepts, I understand the concept. I'm just trying to get some numbers. So you're, you issue the bonds for 120, you have that payment for presumably three years or so. You get a $40 million payment, you buy that down, and now you're, you're left with $85 million you're financing over the next 27 years.
Right.
Approximately, what are those annual payments? And the reason I'm asking is I see that at the end of this term, we're expecting or projecting to get $3.1 million in estimated tax yield. And so I'm trying to understand, does the $3.1 million tax yield cover those payments? Are the payments roughly $3 million per year?
So new debt, I don't have exact numbers, but I will try to give you some ballpark. So additional debt for a full CIP is roughly about $12 million, 11.9, a debt service payment. And for a modified is around 8 million, 7.9, somewhere there. If we were to add in 3 million more, it's not going to cover all of your debt service, even after your land sale proceeds are accounted for. You are taking care of, of the 120 in the modified. You are taking care of a significant portion of your. But it will not be enough to cover your full debt service.
Agreed, okay, so I was not clear. What I'm trying to understand is the economic development as projected in the, the model roughly expected to cover the cost of the high school in the buy-down debt model, buy-down debt version?
What, what the buy-down debt actually does is, if you look at the yellow line there, what it does is it's a greater impact to your residents now and a lesser or a much less reduced impact in the future, future years. So you're charging now more in now dollars. What the buying down debt service does is it's kind of a gradual increase on a homeowner or every parcel that you're increasing. So where, who is to pay more for that? So it's more of a technical thing, essentially. There will be costs associated with buying down debt. Remains to be seen exactly how much, and when we kind of see the options by our financial advisors on how to structure the debt, we'll see those as well. But the idea with both of those is that we use this land sale proceeds to help us to align with the timeline of the projects, whether you do it more so that it has a immediate impact on the real estate tax or if it has a gradual impact in the out-years.
Okay, I, I understand that concept. What I'm, what I'm trying to understand, and I may be not asking the question artfully. Once the, the full, once the economic development is fully realized on the 10 acres at the high school campus, is it anticipated that the, the estimated tax yield, in this case, I'm using 3.1 million, is that anticipated to cover the debt associated with the high school, just the high school? I'm trying, I'm saying, if we develop 10 acres per this estimate, will that in the out-years, I appreciate there's a period of flux or risk that the community has to take, is it anticipated that that part, that the high school would be covered by that 3.1 million, the, the debt on the high school be covered?
About the 8 million. So average debt, like I said, on the 120 million?
Yep.
Is rough, the new debt on the high school is about 8 million?
Eight million per year.
Added debt service, I mean. On a 120 issuance.
Okay.
So your 3 million is not enough to, to cover the full debt service.
40%. We think, we think the annual payment on the $120 million is expected to be $8 million over 30 years? That math doesn't work.
No, then, but then you're adding more debt. So, I mean, are you looking just at the school? Because we're adding other CIP projects and.
Just at the school. I want to see, is that after some period of time, is the economic development on those 10 acres sufficient to cover the $120 million debt? Just, I want to just, I want to stay in that little tiny 40 acres.
Sure, I, I hear your question well now. Why don't you go through your slew of questions while I have you an answer in a few minutes? I need to look at the spreadsheets.
Okay, yeah, right. I mean, if I had an amortization table, I would know my answer right away.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm going to do.
I don't, I don't. Okay, so why don't we come back to, that was my initial. Okay, so why don't we come back to, that was my initial question, let's ask other questions and I will go for it, guys. Stevens?
I have a question about the library. With the modified proposal, we're delaying the library. 2022, is that the?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There's obviously a lot of moving parts to the, the whole budgeting process. If we got to, let's say, 2020, and things are going well in the city, from a number of different fronts, would we have the ability to pull forward the library? In other words, we're not stuck to that 2022 date?
Correct, you could amend the CIP again, and the library could come forward, or you could bring forward the turf, or whichever other project was delayed.
And could we even give any guidance at this stage that says if we're so fortunate to have a surplus, or things are going very, very well from an overall economic perspective, that the library is top of the, the line as far as, is where that money goes?
The commission certainly could give that guidance as you did with your February motion that directed that this come back and that money should be dedicated to Pago and so forth. So you clearly gave some direction for council's consideration. So you can do that. And if I may, I neglected when I did the introduction to acknowledge that you have at the dais an updated memo from Superintendent Noonan that was responsive to the Planning Commission's questions in terms of the additional history of the high school renovations and expansion. And also, I did want to note that council did have a lengthy conversation on the presentation that you just had the summary of, the financial, and council has not come down clearly on either full CIP or modified CIP. And so for their vote next Monday, they will have both ordinances before them as well as your recommendation, because of course they didn't have your recommendation either. So I did want to let you know where council was and from their work session discussion they just had. Glad to answer additional questions while Ms. Bawa looks at the spreadsheet analysis.
I had a quick question for all of the charts that have the impact with the tax yield. Is there, is there any logical scenario where you would have the tax yield impact but not the land sale impact? I'm just trying to understand if that blue line makes any sense on those charts.
You will not have tax, yeah, the blue line is sort of, nothing happens, you're not going to have tax yield if you don't sell your land.
Well, it looks like the blue line on the with tax yield one is impacted by that tax yield, but realistically, it's an all or nothing thing. You're not going to have tax yield if you can't sell the land or lease it at a sales like value.
Yeah, if you, if you look at the full CIP with or without tax yield, you basically stay at the 13 to 15 cents because.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying it pushes the, it's a minor point, but like on page 12, you don't jump up to 15 cents until 2023. Realistically, you're, you're still going to jump at 2022 because you're not going to be getting tax yield or land sale if you haven't sold the land. All right, I just wanted to mention that. I don't know, I have questions, I have lots of thoughts.
Questions from this side? No, okay.
And Chair, we do have an answer for you.
Excellent work.
So looking at the numbers, if you make, if we make 40 million to reduce the debt, after the year fiscal year '25, the added new debt service numbers drop from the 7 million, dropped down to about 5.2, and then further drop to in the 4 million ballpark. So a big chunk of it is being addressed by the tax yield, however, not all of it. And then in the out years, after like somewhere around 38, 39, it drops down to a point where it's like 3.3, 3.1, so it kind of.
And what, I'm sorry, what year was that?
Uh, 38, 37, 38.
Okay, so once the total net fiscal impact has occurred, and you have bought down the debt, if you use the debt to buy, if you use the 40 million to buy down the debt, you will be covering roughly 80% of the bond, annual bond cost through the economic development, if I understand what you said?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's, mostly covers it, and then it's, what about the $10 million that we had from the water sale, is that being included in?
That is being included, so it's more, instead of 40, it's a 50 million. We're using a reserve of 50 million, yeah.
So the numbers you just gave me was the 50?
But to get to that point where it's covering 80%, it's like 12 years out, basically.
Correct, I mean, I've said this many times, there, there's a period of risk the community's going to have to take on this, if, if it's, if they pass the referendum, there's definitely a period where it'll be both painful for the taxpayer, but also, you know, a risk saying, do we think the, the land will sell? Do we think we'll have appropriate economic development on those 10 acres? But based on our model and our assumptions, and my belief that both those things will happen, I now understand that it looks approximately like 10 years or so till we are, maybe 12, 12 years. You think 15 before we cover? Okay.
And then even the tax yield has a bunch of assumptions into it. You know, you're assuming that four years out, we will have a ramp up on the fiscal impact, starting with a 25% built over eight years, 200%. So.
So the reason it's 15 years is because your assumptions are, the assumption appears to now, now I'm looking at this, that it's going to take, it's going to take about seven years to get to the full net fiscal impact. It's, this is going to be developed in four different parcels as opposed to one developer coming in and developing all, all 10 acres.
Right.
That's conservative, I'm not sure that's accurate. I mean, that's fine to be, I, I tend to think it's not going to happen in four separate phases, but that's my belief in the property.
Yeah, it was intended to be conservative because you also don't know what the economy's going to do, as Ms. Bawa said, we could be in an economic downturn. It is modeling and mirroring basically how we've seen other projects build out, where they get their entitlements three years later, then you have a little financing problem, then you got to change some of the, the product type.
That never happens.
Since that never happens, but we just, the city manager and the CFO wanted to be conservative, not unrealistic, but with a balance to our pattern of development in the city in the past.
I do have another question. Is it safe to assume that all these charts also assume zero economic development in other parts of the city?
There is a 2.5% AV growth throughout all the assumptions, which is a 10-year average.
So what we include in the model is a 2.5% assessed valuation increase, and that is the average for the last 10 years, which includes the developments.
All right, and do you include, does this model include the capital contributions that have come with the mixed-use developments that have occurred in the past that may occur in the future? Or school contributions?
This did not anticipate new, you know, like, capital contributions for this project, but we've, we've accounted for all the capital monies to date.
Sure.
They went to Mount Daniel.
But for example, if Founders Row and Broad and Washington and another one went, that's potentially a few more million dollars that could go against the debt service.
Yeah, everything that's been received and anticipated to be received to date has been attributed to Mount Daniel, but any future ones could be attributed. They are not accounted for in the model before you. Those projects are not approved.
Yes, well, we don't, we cannot predict the future, can we?
Any other questions or comments? Any comments we want to make? Oh, we got a speaker slip, I know. I'm going to open this up to the public in just a second. Mr. DeLong, you've been very patient, I appreciate it. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, let me open it up to the public. Mr. DeLong, you are our first speaker on this issue.
Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members, my name is Chester W. DeLong, 213 West Columbia Street, Falls Church, Virginia. Some of you also know me as Vice Chair of the, of the Library Board of Trustees. The agenda tonight has a proposal to move the library project to 2022. This is a result of, A, some concerns about the city's ability to handle the projects along with the City Hall plus other projects, and B, the perception that it might be possible to fund the library with GM property sales proceeds. As to the first point, at least the city staff engineer, at least one city staff engineer has volunteered to handle this project. He may be junior, but why not let him do it without, with him knowing that doing a good job on such a high-profile project certainly would be helpful to his career, a major incentive to succeed. On the second point, the timetable for receiving the sale proceeds does not seem to fit into the suggested timeframe of 2022, and would probably lead to further delays in the project. From what I hear now, we seem to have council convinced a council majority that the project should remain in 2018. So I appeal to you to heed the referendum and retain the library in the CIP for 2018 and not postpone it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Rogers?
I'm sure you received some letters from VEPIS over the period that you've been considering this, and as a member of their board, I'd like to align myself with those comments as well. But I'm speaking here tonight, and I never actually thought I would be speaking here to the Planning Commission to try to convince you to support full funding for the library for this fiscal year. And the reason is because it was the Planning Commission, which worked with the library for how many years, eight, 10, maybe even longer? Actually, we tried to move the library up 15, 16. I mean, we've worked, we had worked on this for a long time. We wanted to get a practical and politically acceptable number that would take care of the library's needs and the community's desire to renovate the library. And because I believe it is the Planning Commission that looks to the future and listens to the citizens, and the citizens have spoken in last November's referendum, so this year is the right year to go ahead with this project. It will not interfere with future plans for the high school and other needed school renovations. However, if we continue to ignore the benefits that our library gives to our citizens, from toddlers to seniors, in lieu of only funding school projects, we become not a city that functions for its entire population, but simply an elite, an elite school district. The Planning Commission needs to continue the funding of the full 8.7 million in the CIP, and to, by doing this, to supply more backbone for the city, council, to go ahead with a fully funded library project. As previously outlined by the city's financial officer here tonight, there are many options that the city has when bonding these projects. I'm certain that the schools will be fully taken care of when their time comes. Please take into consideration the needs of the entire population of the city and retain the library's full funding in this year's CIP. I do have one question that I'd like to ask either the commission or city staff. If in fact, the school referendum fails, apropos to Mr. Stevens' question, could then the funding be put back into the CIP for 2018?
I might have staff answer that, but my sense is yes, that it's already passed the referendum.
I mean, that's definitely something that might happen.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Chee, do you have any other additional speaker slips? Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this matter? All right, well, then I'm going to close it for the public comment. Are there any other comments we would like to make, or anybody else?
I got lots of, I got.
I got lots of comments too, I'm just asking if you.
Happy to start?
Go start off.
All right, first of all, I'll start off with Ruth's last point, which was, if we delay the library in the CIP, are we creating a situation where this potential school referendum this fall is campaigned as a schools versus library effort? Because the library folks say, hey, look, if we can shoot down this school referendum, we will get our library back in the CIP. That is a scenario that I would like to avoid, because I actually agree with Ruth, I think we should be able to do the library and the school. And I think that, that, that would be a really unfortunate situation to have that. So I wasn't here two weeks ago, so I didn't go through the work session, but I tried to read up on stuff. So that's one thing I'm concerned about. Similarly, you know, we have the million bucks for the turf field, I know, and it's just turf field, who cares? But hey, it's just a million bucks. And I think of all the things we spend money on, it's the, it's like a great return, I mean, you'd get so much use out of that field. So I am wary of, I, I admit, I am more willing to take on some risk, and I'm more willing to pay higher taxes to get the things that I'd like the city to have, and I know not everyone is in that position, but I feel like we're potentially unnecessarily trying to turn it, you know? Now, I do also think that it is complicated, I received a comment earlier today about, hey, the, the citizens approved the library in a referendum, I can't believe we won't just do that, they approved that. Okay, well, it's more complicated than that because we do have a lot going on, we've got other needs, and so there is some position where, you know, you can't just have everything decided by referendum, so, but, but I, CIP is tricky, because we keep saying, we should, we'll just revise it later, we'll just revise it later. So in some ways, does it even matter? But I think in terms of planning, I think it's important to think about what, what we're, what we're suggesting happens. I also think that, while I appreciate this includes some average, over 10-year average net growth in revenues or whatever, I mean, I think we do have other opportunities in the city for redevelopment that can help with all of this. I know there's some reluctance there, but I feel like we're trying to get, we, we want a lot of things, and we need to be willing to do what we need to do to get those things. So I wasn't here for the work session, so I don't know all the details, and maybe you guys will fill me in, but I think that, I'm inclined to try to keep the full CIP intact, get through a referendum, and see if we can make it work. I think it's a lot of pressure on city council to do that, but my fear, I have a big fear that I do not want the referendum this fall to be like, hey, if you're voting for the school, you're voting against the library. I don't think that's the right way to look at it, I think we should try to figure a way to do both.
All right, Ms. Chee.
I just want to go, Mr. Rankin was asking like what, what was going on in the last meeting, and I think part of it is that there's a substantial difference in the tax rate, the percent tax rate. It's, it's enough of a drop that I felt like it made sense to modify the CIP. And I, I totally understand Mrs. Rogers' comments, because we were part of that Planning Commission, that the library came in with a very large amount, and we worked with them to bring it way down, and they were very cooperative about it. But I just, I don't think the community is hurt by putting off the library by a few years, and we revise the CIP every year. We, we revise it constantly. So there's no issue with us revising the CIP next year and moving it up if we possibly can move it up. And I also, I also felt like with the Larry Graves Field, I would like to have that field as, you know, my child sometimes plays soccer way, way far from here, because we don't have enough fields here, from here. But, but I just felt like it's, it's kind of a luxury at this point to have that extra turf field. And again, looking at the modified CIP tax rate versus the full with tax yield, without tax yield, it's a significant difference.
Just so I'm clear, are you talking between 3 cents and 6 cents? So between $200 and $400?
Well, I do, I think it's, I think.
I'm just trying to show us what you're talking about, I'm not.
Well, I'm looking at. The full CIP tax input with, without tax yield, which is 13 and 9, and the CIP, which is 7 and 4.
Right, without tax yield, nothing is going to be easy.
Well, but I'm just saying like that's. Well, but I'm just saying like that's, that's the basis, because the tax yield is, that is us guessing what it's going to be. But at this base level, the modified CIP does lower the tax.
Well, to be clear, the, the blue lines all, so, so, I, I agree the tax yield is questionable, but I'm just saying, I just want to make clear what we're, what we're comparing. So 13 cents versus seven cents?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
I, I think, and I don't know about you, but I think when we as a city talk a lot about two cents, add in two cents, add in four cents, and when you talk about add in four cents, people think that's an awful lot. I think that to a lot of citizens, there's a big difference between 13 and 7 cents.
Yeah, no, I, I just want to make sure we're.
But I'm, you know.
Why are we, I'm sorry to interrupt here, but why is we talking about 13 and 7 versus 6 and 4?
Well, we can talk about 6 and 4.
The, the concept that there would be no land sale or no ground lease seems.
Well, then we're talking.
I mean, it's potential, I, you know, there's risks and everything, but that seems more unlikely.
Well, then we're talking about 13 and 6 versus 7 and 3. That's with tax yield.
What is the impact of just the field on the tax rate, a million-dollar field? If we modified it to keep that? I mean, the library is definitely a much bigger bite, and the library exists now and I can go and use it, and it will exist even if this gets pushed back, but the field is basically useless. And based on one of the bits of information we got from someone, it sounds like this is potentially also not an infinite window of that field being something that we can convert to turf. So, I, you know what I mean? Like, I think that a field is also something that everyone can use. Obviously, it's used mostly by kids, I guess, but I'm, I just don't want it to be like, hey, we're only doing school stuff, that's all we're going to do.
Well, I'm just saying, even with, if you look at for tax yield, the modified versus full, we're talking 7 and 3, 13 and 6. I, I just think to some citizens, that's a, that's a big difference.
I am sure it is.
And I didn't think, like, but I understand what you're saying, that you don't want to set it up as the either or, like, you know, we're not getting the library because of the schools. But I don't think it's, it's not just the schools, it's our overall debt that's an issue here. And when we look at the chart where we're out of compliance, by make, in the modified CIP, it's a lot less years. And I think from a stability, financial stability point of view, I think less years is a good thing to be out of, out of compliance. But I'm, I'm not like, I'm not saying absolutely against the full CIP. I can, you have made some, you made some good arguments about it, but I wouldn't want to make the choice based on some potential political thing where it's.
To be clear, my goal is to get a high school built.
I know. I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm just saying, it seems to me a part of the issue here is that you're concerned about a political battle that could be set up that's library versus school, and I don't think that's true.
That could result in a high school not being built.
Right, I understand. But I think, I just think from a fiscal point of view, the modified CIP makes more sense. That's, that's just me. But I'm not against the full, and if the, you know, Planning Commission is going that way, I wouldn't be against it, but I just think that the modified makes more sense.
I have a question about the city hall. Those, that obligation has already been incurred? I mean, we're talking about modified CIP city hall in 2018, says it's $11.7 million?
So it's a 16.95 already appropriated project over four fiscal years. About 5 million has been issued in debt already, and 11.7 is the final amount that would be then issued in this next round to go with the construction of the project. So we have enough money in the bank already issued to start the first phase of construction that's on your site plan on the next item, but we still have 11.7 to issue.
And what does the first phase of construction relate to? I, I know we're.
Out of order now.
I know we're, I know we're jumping to the next item, but it matters to me as it relates to the CIP.
So we are still finalizing the actual full phasing of it, but in order to beat the win or the first phase will be the new construction in the back, which is the parking structure and the new chambers on top. And then timing of that is the new mechanical HVAC system, and then that logically fits into the west wing because that's where the new mechanical room is, and so we'd start renovations there. And then the question is center and east wing or east wing and center, tying all the mechanical systems together.
So, I mean, this is what I was going to address in the, the next agenda item. I have some real concerns about the city hall project, and I want to understand if we did not issue the 11.7 million dollars, which has not been an option that's been talked about thus far. There, well, let me restate it, there's no obligation to issue the 11.7 million or per the way the referendum has already occurred? Do you have to issue the 11.7 million? Let me simplify it that way.
There's no referendum that's been done for the city hall public space and safety improvements because it's exempt under council's policy because it's a public safety. Public safety and utilities, your core infrastructure, don't go through the voter referendum.
That's right, I'm sorry.
It was also four phases, so it was below the 10% threshold. There is no obligation to issue the next tranche of bonds, it's been appropriated, but council has to take issue, take action to issue the bonds. You don't issue the bonds, the project will stop because you don't have enough of the 13 million left for construction dollars. What is left that's been already issued is not quite, but it's close to the amount that you need that we talked about on the big sheet that shows the end-of-life systems that you would have to do regardless of anything. So you would have enough just to put the HVAC, the falling apart elevators together and take out the asbestos, and the building would stay as is in its current condition.
How would that action be taken? Because, I mean, it's no longer in the CIP, correct?
It's, it's in the CIP, it's already been approved.
But appropriate.
So it's not in the five years before you, so you would have to modify the ordinance that's before you to defund the already approved city hall project.
Is that part of the current five year that we're doing? It's part of a past five year?
And it would not be what staff is recommending, it's not the city manager's CIP amendment before you. Planning Commission can modify as you deem, it would not be our recommendation. And just to clarify some of the school conversations of school versus general government, I do want to recall that in order for the 10 acres of economic development to happen, you do still need to do the high school. So regardless of the facility needs and the school needs, if you want the 10 million, 10 acres of economic development, we need to reconfigure that sprawling high school.
Also, I feel like, I'm thinking about this, I, I want to make sure if, if the, if the, if we have a referendum this fall for new high school and it fails, that does not mean we are not going to have massive capital requirements for the schools in the very near term. So I don't really think, and I think we should be specific about that, I think it's unlikely if we delay the library, I don't think we're going to move that library up just because the referendum might fail, because I, because then we're going to be in a real world of her trying to figure out how to actually patch anything together. So I, I don't know, I just want to be, I'd be tempted to even figure out how to craft something like, if we have to move the library, it's because we've decided to focus on the schools and we have to keep that as our priority. We can't then just say, oh, the referendum failed, so that means nobody wants the school. It might mean that people don't like that plan, but we, we can't then just, oh, just roll the library back in. We're still going to be needing, I mean, the school problem is only going to get more expensive, only going to get more expensive. So if we're worried about the expense, moving that library up is never going to be smart. So I think we either try to figure out how to make the library happen now and just know that it's going to be expensive for a while because we have, we have kicked this can down the road for decades apparently, or, or we make clear that, like, what our priorities are. I just, like, the library is not going to shut down if we aren't able to do renovations. The schools are going to eventually cease to function, and that is not, we could actually survive as a city without a library. I hopefully don't have to, and I don't think we will, but we, what are we going to do when you can't go to the high school?
Well, this is what I, I'm agreeing.
The more trailer it's in.
I'm agreeing entirely. My preference, though, based on the next agenda item, would to be to investigate halting the additional 11.7 million dollars on city hall and handling these end-of usable life systems, or these systems that have reached the end of their usable life, and instead fund the library.
I fully disagree with that. I think that what we're doing at city hall is much more important to the function of city than, than moving the library up.
And I would agree.
I mean, we're talking about real functional issues with the court system. We have, we are going to come up there, come up across, against a wall there with Arlington, and we're going to have to decide how to deal with our court systems. And I just, I fully disagree with that. If it's, if it's the library versus the city hall, plus the city hall project's been going on even longer than the library, it's been cut down even more, we're down to the bare bones of what we need to do to keep this place functioning. And I think that more people coming in and out of here trying to get things done and can't find anything, the police aren't in optimal locations, the court system isn't right, I just, I wholly disagree with that. I think pushing out the library is much less harmful to the city and to citizens.
The hierarchy of the needs, I mean, you have to put the schools and the city hall ahead of the library, you just have to. Doesn't mean they're all not important, but, I mean, ultimately, the city council will make the tough, the tough call, right? But, but from our point of view, I mean, all this stuff is supported by the comprehensive plan, which is really what we're talking about as far as the Planning Commission's role on the CIP, but you have to prioritize and, you know, if this is what, I, I agree with Ms. Teets as far as, you know, it's more fiscally responsible, and I understand where the staff is coming from on the modification, it just seems that it's a, it's tough decisions, we can't have everything all at once when we want it. So, I'm, I'm willing to support staff's recommendation here.
I would rather support the modified CIP, but I would, I would support the full CIP before I would cut the city hall for the library.
Okay, well, I mean, we can disagree on this. I think that the money being spent, I mean, if it was in a scenario where city hall was being proposed in a format that I was happy with, I think that this, I think the project that's before us is rushed. I mean, we're, we're jumping ahead here on agenda items, it just, I think the project before us is rushed, we're trying to shoehorn it in very quickly. I think it is spending an enormous amount, enormous amount of money to address a court proceeding that happens one day a week on Wednesday to deal with traffic tickets, and we are reconfiguring this entire city hall in a rushed manner to handle a need that I think should at least be researched and considered on handling a different way, whether that's outsourcing it to Arlington and paying some significant money so that they can handle it at a court facility designed for this. This council chamber, to me, is not the problem, other than these safety issues and that we're proposing because of the additional cost as it's being, you know, thrown at us in the last month, to basically spend 11.7 million dollars to make sure that a system, you say, you know, we have a library that's operating okay, this is not ideal, there's certainly been people, you know, recommendations from the state saying it's not acceptable, but ultimately, to handle, you know, prisoners and court proceedings on one day a week on Wednesdays for traffic tickets to, to handle, because we're not addressing in this proposal that's coming up on the next agenda item, we're not addressing the needs of the flow of city hall.
We are, we're adding Wayfair, we're adding connections, we're adding media rooms.
All right, well, we're going to agree, we're going to disagree on that.
We also have, we also have a staff safety issue in that we have too many entrances, there's no way to control ingress and egress, people can wander around this building at will. There's a lot more than just the court system, there's massive safety issues here. I personally have seen many people just wandering around and know where they were, I mean, anything can happen in this building during the day, it's not safe. It's not safe for our workers, it's not safe for our citizens to be in an unsecured building, it's, it's just not, there's a lot more to it than just the court system, that's just part of it. But I will just say, I know it feels like it's rushed, but this has literally been going on for more than 12 years. And the reason we're in this position is that costs have gone up because we continuously put it off, or we said, cut some more. And the problem is eventually, it's just like with the high school. 2009, 2010, we had a $65 million plan to fix the high school, we put it off, then we'll deal with it later, now it's 120. It, I think city hall's the same problem, it was much cheaper when we started 12 years ago and it just continues to add costs. And I think that we need, you know, we need to get moving with it, or again, a city hall will go up again. I also will say that on the library side, I'm also concerned because we do have a change in management at the library coming, and I'm really, I'm also concerned about someone new coming in and them being rushed to do a project that they will not, may or may not feel is the right project for the library or the right setup or the right flow, a lot of the library project is internal flow and workspace, and I think that in a way, it's kind of good that we are slowing it down because the person coming in will have a chance to really look at the plan and see what they think. So I just, I want to put that out there too.
Okay, fair enough. Anyone have any other comments about modified versus full CIP?
Just a few thoughts. The, I think all of the projects in the full CIP are desirable, so this notion that it's one versus the other, hopefully we can avoid that. They're, they're all desirable projects, I think it's a matter of focusing on risk and trying to determine how much risk, rich, risk we can absorb. My understanding on the modified CIP is that it takes some of the projects and it delays them until we know for sure what's going to happen with the 10-acre economic development. That makes sense to me, given the huge amount of debt that we have, so even though the tax yield does make the numbers look better than what we were looking at last week, I think I still come out at the same place, that the best opportunity to get a bond referendum passed this fall is to, to approach it through the modified CIP. With the, with the one additional comment that I was indicating earlier is that if, when we get to 2019, 2020, if things look better economically than what we're forecasting at this point, then I'd really like to see the benefits of that go towards accelerating the library prior to 2022.
Any other comments? Okay. So, it sounds, I mean, at the last meeting, we had given some guidance that said we were interested in the modified CIP. And it's not clear to me that we're still there. I, I.
Well, to be clear, I, my concern, as I sort of expressed, I, I personally feel like if the library had to be pushed back for financial reasons, it's, it's not the end of the world. My concern is that, and I know we're trying to not make decisions based on political challenges, but if it sets up a particularly difficult path for a school referendum this fall, maybe we can mitigate that by being very specific, that if we can get the schools going and this economic development goes better than planned, or maybe we have more economic development in town elsewhere, we can proactively move the library up. I mean, the library's got a plan in place and, you know, delaying it by a year or two to get a better sense maybe is, is reassuring to people, like, you know, I think this CIP, the modified CIP, I think we're considering is sort of like, hey, we're going to push the library back pretty far because we don't know what's going to pan out, but maybe we, maybe that's being too, too conservative pushing out that far and that you could minimize this sort of pitting the library proponents against the school proponents this fall by being more specific about our desire to get the library done sooner. I, I don't know how you'd phrase it, but like, hey, if, if, if we can't afford it, we can't afford it, you know, we got to do the school, okay, so we're going down that path. But if we can squeeze it in there, or things improve, or maybe, you know, the people running council at the time feel like the citizens want to bump up the tax rates and we're going to do the library sooner, you know, I, I would be fully in favor of that. So, so that's my main thought about the full CIP, CIP, is that I don't, I don't want to create that conflict. I personally think we could pull it off and the city would benefit from it, but at the same time, I also can see the library being delayed, I, there are, there are many logical reasons to do that. Still think we're missing the window on this turf field, but not going to ruin everything over one whole turf field.
Well, look, my, my view is that you have to, based on the enormous debt obligations that are coming before the city, you have to make tough choices. I mean, my goal is also similar to what's been said here, that to get a new high school built. I believe that not only has reached its end of its usable life, but also it will benefit the community, not only the kids who are there, but also the property values and what we stand for in the city of Falls Church. Having a newer, adequate, functioning school facility is of utmost importance. Where I will disagree is that if I'm making these choices, to me, it's a, a city, it's to get rid of a city hall project that I believe is rushed and does not meet the needs or has been properly considered for other alternatives to save money. So if I'm going to make those choices, and maybe I'm a minority of one here, to me, it's to postpone the additional funding of the 11.7 million dollars because I think the library project. I think the library project has additional benefits that have been considered and have been worked through on this commission for many, many years, and we told them to go back and, and bring down the number to a more reasonable number, and that we have seen through that process the overwhelming usage of this building for its, for the citizens beyond just those who have schoolchildren, and in fact, passed a referendum overwhelmingly where the citizens believed that this was worthwhile money. And I was corrected that we actually didn't do that for the city hall because it made, it was able to come in through those corrections. And it doesn't mean that city hall doesn't need to have safety things addressed. I don't believe, as we'll discuss in a few minutes, that the project that's before us now is, is adequate, or, or does what I was hoping it would do. So I, so if I'm making these tough choices, I would support a reduction in the, in the, I would, I will vote to reduce the city hall or not issue the additional eleven point seven million dollars, and I am not suggesting that that is going to be acceptable to the rest of the commission, but that if I'm going to make a tough choice, it will be on city hall. So, I would, I would support.
Will you support the full CIP then? Because it sounds like Mr. Rankin would.
I, I would not. I, I think I'm going to be a no vote, simply because I think you do need to make tough choices. I'm just going to make a different choice than I think other people on the commission would. So, that's where I stand on it. There's so much debt that we're going to be issuing, and I think that's, tough decisions would have to be made, in my case, it would be on the city hall.
It seems like right now we're, we're maybe a modified, a modified, a modified, a full or a modified, and I don't like this motion altogether.
That's fine.
So, I.
Exactly.
I, I'm willing to move forward and, and propose the current motion.
Yeah, make, I mean, make a motion, that's okay, that there's not unanimous support for it.
Okay.
If, if.
I wonder if, before you do that, I, I just had a question for you, Mr. Chair. If we were not to go forward with the city hall, doesn't the judge have a say to the city in some regard as to, you know, in other words, there's implications of that?
Sure.
That could be significant. I don't know what they are, but it just strikes me that, that they could.
We can't go to that.
Well, I mean, I don't know the implications either. I don't know if, if my opinion could be overridden by Virginia state law that we're not providing the necessary facilities. It's currently functioning now, while not ideally, I think that it, and so there may be ramifications that I'm not aware of, that, for sure, that I think that, what I heard tonight was that there is money to handle the systems that are at the end of their life, and that a different project for those, the additional phases or the additional tranches of debt could be reconsidered than what's before us this evening. If I don't understand the full implications, it sounds like it's not going to matter, honestly, but that's, that's a valid question. I, I don't understand the implication of what state law has to say about the safety of city hall and the, the court. What I think needs to be considered, perhaps again, in light of the debt that we're facing, is maybe to outsource this responsibility. And again, there could be state law that says, you must do this, and you must have a, you know, a sheriff, and you must have a court system. It's all possible, but I don't understand all the ramifications, but I think that the expense that we're going through in this time where we're trying to provide a high school is excessive to provide adequate, adequate protections. I mean, if it's an additional few police officers on Wednesday evening, Wednesday, Wednesdays to handle these traffic cases, to me, that's more economical than altering these chambers in the current economic environment. This chamber works for most of what we do in the city of Falls Church, it does not work for the court system. I've heard that loud and clear, and I've heard it for the nine years that I've been on the planning commission. This room doesn't work.
That would be because the city hall project started well before the library project.
Yes.
It started at a price tag of fifty-five million, and has been slowly cut down and cut down and cut down till we're to, we're down to the bare minimum to meet the requirements of our staff and our court system and our citizens. And so I would just say, I mean, we're going to talk about, we've worked on the library for a long, the city hall, I don't know about you, but I think I've had maybe ten work sessions on this.
We're not, we're not going to argue about the start date of the city hall.
I know.
What I, what I would say is that the proposal has dramatically changed in the last thirty to forty-five days.
We have to actually vote to stay much longer, too.
So it, it, it doesn't sound like what I'm suggesting is going to be, going to matter, but that's, that, that was the answer to your question. All right, so you can make a motion if you'd like, or anyone else can make a motion.
Anyone else want to make a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion. Let's see. Whereas section six point one nine of the city charter and section seventeen point zero eight of the city code requires that the planning commission, in the preparation of its capital improvement recommendations, shall consult with the city manager, the school board, the heads of departments, and interested citizens and organizations, hold public hearing as it shall deem necessary, and submit his recommendations to the city council. And whereas the capital improvements program, CIP, must be consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and relevant small area master plans, and whereas pursuant to the planning commission FY two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty-two CIP recommendations, requested that any future off-cycle CIP budget recommend amendments related to George Mason High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle Capital Renovation Expansion Project be referred to the planning commission for review and action. And whereas on June twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, the city council approved TO one seven dash one-one on first reading and referred the ordinance to the planning commission, and now therefore I move that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve pursuant to section six point one nine of the city charter and section seventeen point oh eight of the city code, the modified F one two thousand eighteen, twenty twenty-two capital improvements program budget amendment, as presented on July thirty and seventeen, two thousand seventeen, that ensures financial sustainability, and I further move that this recommendation be transmitted to the city council for action at its July twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, public hearing and second reading.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just want to say one last time, I, I think, I guess this is the way to go, but I think both the planning commission and city council going forward towards a potential referendum needs to be doing our best to make sure this is not being set up as some sort of library versus high school choice. I don't think that is what the choice will be, but I, I, hopefully in future meetings we'll have opportunities to reinforce our, our desire to get the library done as soon as we can afford it, and to reassure people that that's not, that the, that the way to get there is to not shoot down the high school. I, I think that'll be important, but I, I guess for now, this is probably the way to go with the modified CIP.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. G, can you call the roll?
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Rankin?
Yes.
Pines?
Yes.
Teetz?
Yes.
Buduska?
No.
Motion passes four to one.
All right, thank you. All right, can I, we are going to definitely go over eleven, eleven o'clock here.
Can I move that we go past eleven PM for our meeting?
How much past eleven?
Having heard a motion, do I have a second?
I'll move fifteen minutes. How much?
Fifteen minutes.
You may be able to do it.
That's going to be tough on this city hall project, and we do have the historic home. I don't know how long any of this is going to take, honestly. I know the historic property should be relatively quick, but I don't know about the city hall.
We do the historic home first? Is anyone here for that, or no?
No.
No one is here for the historic home.
They couldn't have come this long. So we could just do it.
Uh, well, we need, we do need a motion, and I, does it have to be unanimous?
He can leave whenever he wants.
It's true, it's true.
Well, that's actually true, someone used to leave all the time, or Rob.
Long as it's a quorum.
No. So we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, we're not happy about it.
Okay.
Um, do you want an amendment to do the historic house first, just to get it done really quick, or, or do you want to just, or move forward?
I, I would like to do the city hall, because we do have people here for that project.
Okay, let's go forward.
We can begin that presentation, I need to take a one-minute break, unfortunately, otherwise I will not.
We've been drinking the water.
You can begin the.
We already know how it feels about the project.
Commission, thank you for this agenda item this evening and for switching the order so that we could honor the other members in the audience. This evening, we do have the site plan amendment for city hall, this is an amendment to the nineteen eighty-one site plan. In a moment, Mr. Mack, our project manager, will do a short presentation that just provides an update on the changes, since you saw this in work session. I do want to acknowledge that we do have our consultant team in the audience with us, we have the director of public works, and it looks like we have the city manager as well. So I believe that would mean the city council has finished. As we start into this item, I did want to maybe pick up a little bit with the discussion that we had as part of the CIP, and I do appreciate that healthy discussion and action so we can take that forward back to council for their action next Monday. But I did want to acknowledge that this project has been in the works since two thousand and seven. It is a public safety project for improvements, but it is more than just the courts, and because it is the movement in the building, as Ms. Teetz noted, it's the staff, it's the public, and it's the wayfinding, it's OSHA, it's ADA, and so there's a holistic piece that we've talked a lot about during the CIP process, and then getting us to the site plan that's before you with the goal of starting construction in October. There are a lot of information that we've talked about in the past that I'll just, for a brief, put on the record, acknowledging that it may not change any perspective of a specific council member, but for the record, I do want to note that city code requires courts to be held in the city for general district court, it is more than traffic, we do hold felonies and the full spectrum of unfortunate criminal activity here. But it is also juvenile domestic relations court, and so there's very important things that we do with families, get the safety and the legal things taken, and then hopefully get folks into service. That require, would require state code to change, a referendum would be required to change your sheriffs and your court functions that way. There would be, and we have researched this, additional costs on the operating budget if courts weren't in this building and in Arlington, because you don't transfer that for free, our police office, et cetera. So there's a lot of research on that, I just put that on the record for a short statement, glad to talk about it or not talk about it as the commission desires this evening. If, even if there were no courts in this building, this building as a city hall and a police station is not safe and is not secure, and we would need to do the changes that are before you this evening. There are additional ones that we do take into account in order to keep the prisoner and judge separation separate, but even without courts here, we do have people that come into custody and put into holding cells until they can go to Arlington when our police need to arrest and prior to magistrate an arrangement. So just a brief synopsis to put a ten-year worth of history into perspective. We do have the site plan before you this evening, so if the chair is acceptable with that, I would have Mr. Mack do a quick summary presentation on what has changed since you saw this in work session, and then Ms. Rusi is back from vacation and is your planner on this, and she has indicated to me that she will answer any and all questions that you have, and as I indicated, we do have Studio Twenty-seven, and Walter Phillips here to answer any of your technical questions on the site plan as well.
Okay, let's hear from Mr. Mack.
Thanks, Cindy, and thanks to the planning commission again for the opportunity to showcase this or bring this important project in front of you all. I'm just going to go through a really quick presentation to go through the summary of the changes that we've made to the site plan, we submitted it back in May thirtieth, we've had two work sessions since, in June nineteenth and July third, and we've received staff comments since, we've received comments from the AAB and from planning commission, and so the comments that we've received, we've made changes that we feel are very responsive to those comments. Skip through that slide. And just for a overview, Cindy did talk a little bit about this, this is a site plan amendment, and we feel that if you look at Akita's report on page three, under the staff analysis part, feel the staff plan amendment allows the project to be evaluated only within the limits of the proposed work versus as a whole site, and we've seen that has historically been done. And we're amending the nineteen eighty-one site plan amendment where the east wing was put onto the city hall. And so what we're requesting today is request for a site plan approval with, it's kind of weird, but it's condition for administrative verification from planning director, essentially that staff has not had time to review this latest iteration, we're waiting for comments from them due the twenty-first, and so we feel we've been responsive to all the comments, of course, there may be other, other iterations that we have to put into this. We are asking for site plan approval today. And as part of the changes, you'll see that the limit of work has been greatly reduced, and part of that is reduction of the front ADA parking area, that pulling the limit of work back from that area, and so we're proposing in this site plan amendment to leave it as is, and in a future site, and in the future, as we start going through construction, if we do want to bring the ADA parking closer to the center of the building, more accessible to the ramps, we'll go through the variance process and file another amendment at that point when we want to address the parking. So if you look through your site plan, the, these are the main impacts that you'll see. We have a new garage layout, so we've really reduced that scope of work down from changing the retaining wall and reducing those impacts on Cherry Hill Park, and so really maintaining that existing curb line, that existing retaining wall back there, reducing the size of the garage and kind of clipping a corner off of it. The drive aisle has been redone so that it's no longer that one-way going counterclockwise, it's the existing travel way, and you'll be entering through the west of the garage now versus the north end of the garage, and then this layout has been vetted through police department and sheriffs, and they're on board with it, they actually like this better than the previous iteration, and then as a result of that, we're able to put some parking spots in the rear, where the, in the north of the garage where the old entrance used to be, and that's where we're able to also run a few conduits, and that would be a future EV charging station build-out. Another key issue that we looked at was the future expansion over the garage, and I think this is a change from what you guys have heard previously, which was that the current design does support a future expansion in terms of offices, we looked into it closer, and we determined that no, there are still significant structural improvements that would be needed to essentially overbuild the garage to support a future second-floor offices. Essentially, right now, only the part under chambers is built to support that kind of load, and then the rest of the garage, because we are working under a very tight budget, is not, so we would have to essentially overbuild the rest of the garage. And so that, and in a correction to what you're seeing in the comment response, the comment response says three million, we did look deeper into those numbers and we realized that's about a one-point-three million dollar increase over the existing thirteen million dollar budget that would be required, and that would go into additional steel and foundations to essentially overbuild that portion. And this was brought up in previous work sessions, the structural improvements for a future second-floor garage built, you know, spacing for the ramping, increasing from a steel structure or a concrete structure, that would be a three-point-seven million dollar increase. And so all these costs include escalation costs, design contingency, and the hard construction The other major change you'll see is we've really greatly The other major change you'll see is we've really greatly reduced that limit of disturbance, a lot of the, not only the impacts along Cherry Hill Park, we've also pulled back the impacts on the front parking there. And we are anticipating that there are at least five, well, four projects that are approved and funded through the CIP that will be also have some impacts to this site. So we will be filing site plan amendments as those projects get further into design and then further into, into their, along in their processes. A lot of these grant-funded projects are either pending grant funding or we're still going through the very preliminary design processes. We did include a new pedestrian pathway around the facility, sidewalks, a few crosswalks, added some bicycle parking in the rear, covered bicycle parking. We've included a supplementary material packet that you all have with architectural materials. It's got the sustainability narrative lead. We've included a TDM plan, PMP plan, and clarified some exterior facility lighting. All these are, again, trying to be responsive to the comments that we've received over the last month or so. Here are some updated renderings. It's very, what's happened is that the trees that you see in the front there, those used to be further up, closer where those, where there's that seating wall, right here, and so, right here, and that's been replaced with lower shrubs, I think in response to Arborist's comments. We've taken a look at some of the materials that have been used in the front and the colors that are used. And then going in the back, again, you see this is the modified drive-out right here where you're no longer going in the back. On the north side right here, you're entering through the west side right here. And again, change in the color of the materials kind of in response to the comments we've heard previously.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
Is there, do we have a sample of what the materials are? Or it's, I mean, it's just hard to tell. I know the lights aren't even dim, but-
Right.
I know we discussed this at length last work session. What is the new coloring? Let me just start there.
Yeah.
Can you please come to the microphone?
My name's Todd Ray. I'm with Studio 27 Architecture. So what we're doing is there was a whole range of different discussions on what the color should be, and so what we found was that we're going to be using copper as the intention, and basically copper that's going to be pre-patina to be the same color as the copper gutter detailing that's on the current building. So what we will do is-
And the previous color was black, if I recall.
Sorry?
Was the previous color like a blackish?
The previous color was-
Okay.
Very deep gray with a lot of graining in it, and so it patinas really nicely. The gray did not seem to go over very well, and so then we started looking at copper and sort of the aged copper, which is traditional Virginia approach.
Yeah, all right. I'm sorry to interrupt.
That's pretty much the end of this presentation. You know, our schedule really is to get to October. Construction begins in mid-October, and that's really trying to meet the budget that we've got and get the scope that we have. We've really got to be able to get in before winter. So we're really looking at site plan approval today with construction documents being completed within the next two to three weeks and then starting to negotiate a guaranteed maximum price with our contractor who is hit contracting. That would happen in August, and then with Council approval of the construction contract in September, and then beginning construction in mid-October. Done, and I'll turn it over to you guys for questions.
Great. Do we have any questions?
I have a couple. So the garage, it'd be real expensive to make it strong enough to hold a second story of cars. It would also be pretty expensive to hold a second story of offices. This might sound crazy. What if instead of a garage, we built a fence or a wall? Would that save us a lot of money? What is the, is the value in the roof? I mean, I don't want to, I'm not trying to be-
Yeah, no, and I think that's a very valid question. We did actually look at that previously, but I think to echo some of Chief Gavin's previous comments, it's not just the garage, that space is really for the movement of prisoners, for the movement of the judge. So it's not just purely for parking, but there's an elevator that's built into there. There's like hazardous material storage, and it provides an area for, you know, transfer of prisoners, movement of different weapons, right?
But so, I mean, again, so a wall, I mean, I guess, I guess there's some access-
And so it's not just simply an enclosed space. It's also, it needs to be kind of built in and incorporated into the building.
Right, okay. And then I had a question about the front. I know there's two front doors, which some people don't like. I actually think it could be kind of cool, but, and I know there's steps and there's a wheelchair ramp, but could you walk from the front, one front door to the other front door without going down a ramp or up other steps? Is it, you know what I'm saying? There's a walkway along the side of the building.
You mean on the outside of the building?
Yeah, yeah, on the outside, or only on the inside. You see what I'm saying? Like, if I'm standing at that door and I want to walk to the other door on the outside of the building, do I have to go down a ramp, or is there, I can't tell from this drawing if there's a little-
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Currently, there's not.
Okay.
And we're anticipating you go inside, and then there's a long gallery space in this.
Sure. I just thought, yeah, that's fine. And I asked this last time, and I wasn't at the work session, and I see Tom's here. Is the configuration on the inside such that if I were at the permit desk and they told me to go to the Commissioner of the Revenue's office, I would only have to walk a few feet, or would I have to walk to the entire other side of the building?
All right. We did talk about that at the last work session, so let me do a summary of that, and we have it in the comments. Right now, the Development Services is on the first floor, the east wing, and the Commissioner of Revenue is on the west wing. So you do go from that door to the door right behind you for the distance.
All right.
The stairwells are open, and so you have much better wayfinding, and it's easy to see. I think one of the core things we need to do, which you need, we should do now, we need to do during construction, and makes sense to do post-construction, is to do a lot of that processing electronically so that we're not-
Than that 10 years ago.
Whether the counters are right next to each other or right above, I'm not sure that it makes sense for us to send our citizens to two different counters in order for them to get their permits because they obviously need to do the proper processing of their business license. And so I know that Mr. Snyder has seen on some of his travels some places where that's been more electronically, and so my hope is that our internal functions, whether it's these two or others, we look at more automation and realizing.
Well, I agree with that. In fact, I wish I would never have to come to City Hall at all to do all that stuff.
We want you to come somewhere.
Well, I come visit, but to do the business, it'd be way easier to do it from my computer anywhere on earth. So that'd be great.
And it's a, it's a bit of a side note, but as part of our IT upgrades, we're looking at one of our major software packages, which is Munis. It's our finance and buildings permit, is to add a citizen module. And a lot of that, then, you can do online, pay your taxes and do your permits and licenses. So I think we have the ability to do process improvements that complement the facilities because the reality is we don't have enough square footage to put everybody next to each other. That needs to be next to each other, so we've tried to maximize the adjacencies. And when you look at Public Works and Development Services being together for the core processing of applications, from grading plans to building permits, that was where we went. Also, just space-wise, the Commissioner of Revenue has a lot of office space in order to do their full functioning, and so there wasn't another easy place to put them and not displace.
I guess the question for me is when you had to go from one to the other, do you know how to do it inside the building?
I do, because I know what I'm doing.
I know, and I'm just saying the average person would have, usually ends up going outside and going around the building.
Yes, it's tricky.
Now you walk right across this room if you have to do it, because I'm sure 100% of the times we cannot eliminate it if there's some complex situation.
That's, that's fun. I like getting a tour of the building whenever I do. That's nice.
All right, are there any other questions or comments?
Just had a quick question. I saw the two EV charge stations kind of tucked around the back. I'm anticipating that maybe fourth quarter of this year through either the State or Electrify America, which is the BW headquarters, there may be some grant money available regarding EV charge stations. If that happens, how difficult is it to add a EV charge station or two in the front?
So I think that gets back to the point about doing a variance to figure out getting the front parking up to code. Right now, they're not compliant, and so that would be definitely something we could work on in the future when that opportunity comes up. Yeah.
And as a future desire, we can go ahead and plan for the infrastructure, to plan for power lines to go inside of the building and just cap them right at the front of the west wing, because then we can tie them into parking spaces there.
That isn't very expensive or difficult. I'd recommend you do it.
All right. There's no other comments. I mean, I sort of said what I wanted to say in the last agenda item. I think that the project continues to, well, it's not what I had envisioned when we have been working on this City Hall for a long, long time. With each meeting, there are additional cuts. I'm not saying they're not warranted. I think what this does is address the safety concerns. I'm unhappy that it spends money on this court system. So I don't need to repeat what I just said. I think that in this current financial time, that this project is being pushed quickly. I am happy to hear that it's going to have a change to the back because that was not my favorite. But then again, I hear that it's not going to be able to be afforded to expand it in the future. I'm not sure it addresses the things that I thought were more important. I mean, let me restate that. Safety is first. But beyond that, you know, I thought it was going to address the flow in the building better, provide meeting space, provide an ability to have the citizens use City Hall in a capacity that was different than it's being proposed now. So this project has morphed into something that has just become about the police safety and that of the court system, which seems like too much money for what is being required. So that's all. I don't need to belabor the point. We've sort of gone through it. So I don't have any other further questions. So, that being said, I will entertain a motion for site, for this, approving of this site plan.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve site plan application 2017-0658 contingent on administrative review and approval of the final site plan, which is dated July 10th, 2017.
Second.
All right. Ms. G, can you call the roll?
Page two paper.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
I have a question for Akita. How do you, is that your daughter? How do you keep her so good? Oh, your niece? She's, she's, that's the key? All right. My kids would be tearing up the place.
Chair and Commissioners, thank you very much for this evening. Two items.
Yep. All right. Moving on to item E 124 North Fairfax Street. Ms. G, are you making the presentation? Or, or is there a presentation to be made?
Not necessarily. I gave a briefing at the last Planning Commission meeting.
You did?
This house was found to be qualified to go on the city's historic register, mostly because they were digging in the gardens around the house, and they came across a septic marker that said that it had been built in 1910. According to the city's real estate office, it had a 1911 date, but I was, it was explained to me that they were first billed for improvements to the property the following year. You could build it in January and not have to pay taxes until the next January. So the city supports that this is authentically eligible for the historic.
All right, I just have one question. When you receive this designation, what does that mean? It means you can't, well, you, you answer the question.
You get a plaque to put on the front of your house, and then if you do construction on the exterior, you have to go before the city's Historic Architecture Review Board, take their comments. They don't always agree to do what the HARV has suggested. And then in return for having an additional step in the process, then the building permit associated with the work that the owner wants to have done is 50% of the regular cost.
Okay. And the person who lives at this home is, seems to be very supportive of this designation. Okay, I don't have any other questions.
Does this add any restrictions on the neighboring houses?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right. I'm fully supportive of this, but I'm willing to entertain a motion to move this forward.
Okay, I move that the Planning Commission accept the city's historic commission's findings that the property and residential structure located at 124 North Fairfax Street was built in 1910 and are eligible for certification on the city's historic register.
Can I get a second? Ms. G, can you call the roll?
Certainly. Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Seitz?
Yes.
Mr. Wodisca?
Yes.
Duranken?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. I do not think I upset anybody on my vote on that last one, thankfully. New business, none; other business, none. Approval of the minutes.
The minutes are very short this time because we must have work sessions.
Yes.
Short meeting.
Exceedingly short.
Yeah. It's all work session.
I had no comments about the meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, July 3, 2017.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those abstaining?
Yes. Abstainers.
Oh, yes. So to be clear, no, it's not. Item number 12 apparently was misplaced on this agenda, and there will be no work session following this meeting.
I'm darned. I was so excited.
Seeing, oh, do we have any Planning Commission reports?
I've been the last two weeks.
Seeing none. No, if anybody want to have a report, I-
Well, I will report that Ms. Hockenberry is watching our meeting, although she's injured, so that's why she couldn't come, and she sent me an email to say, "Why is this meeting so long?" What? And I was like, "Well, you're at home." But she is watching us.
I have many comments I will not make.
Hopefully she'll feel better being at the next meeting.
Yes, hopefully she feels better.
Yeah.
Seeing as we don't have a Planning Director sitting at the table, I know he's there, but it's vacant, and in effort to move forward, do you have, Mr. Snyder, do you have-
Can I ask him one question?
You can ask what you'd like.
So I know that we're not supposed to have this work session on Founder's Row, but do we, where is our current status of Founder's Row? Because I asked this because I've had many people ask me, and I would like a better answer.
They gave a brief report, kind of status report to City Council at the last meeting.
Right, I saw that on the recording.
Is recorded, and we're waiting to hear from them in terms of when they're ready to come back because they're trying to finalize, I believe, leases on the theater and they're, finalize their proposal in terms of senior housing versus hotel question.
I mean, I personally am hearing the community much, much pushed back on the senior housing, so I, if I was staff, I would suggest to them to come up with some alternatives. But I think if they're coming just with that, I don't think it's going to do well, at least from a community point of view.
Okay.
I did want to thank the Chairman for your participation in the ULI session on West Broad.
Oh, you're very welcome.
That was, I thought we had a lot of people from around the area coming, and my understanding of feedback was very positive. and feedback was very positive about the event. I think Mr. Duncan was also there from city council. So again, thank you for spending your evening with a lot of folks from out of town to tell us what was, tell them what was going on.
Yeah, no, it was a real pleasure. Okay, we are adjourned.